All right. All right, well, we will start slowly. Emphasize each word. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole to get to order on Tuesday, July 20th at 5:00 PM. I would ask that Lou note roll call. I have no announcements. Minutes from the Committee of the Whole on July 6, 2021. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Colleen. Is there a second? All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, edits, corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on. Does someone want to call Mark? Okay. All right. Well, the plan for the Committee of the Whole tonight is to review the Housing and Neighborhood Chapter of the Com Plan. There's been a lot of discussion about what's in the Committee of the Whole, or Committee of the Whole, what's in the Housing and Neighborhood Com Plan chapter. Some of it, the discussion has been accurate and some of it has has not been accurate about the draft. So it's our hope tonight that as we walk through the content of the draft, we'll have a chance to discuss it and get a good sense for what's really in the draft and then make any suggestions or additions that we want to have Mark incorporate. Additionally, we want to talk about strategies for community engagement in in the Com Plan and specifically in this chapter. I might suggest that maybe that's where we start before Mark gets here and talk about ways that we want to engage with the community. And then when Mark gets here in five minutes, we can start with the content. Does that work, Michelle? Brandy?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was gonna suggest is that we just kind of skip over so a few of the details until Mark arrives. He says he'll be here in about five minutes.
Okay.
Or so. So as part of the comprehensive plan update, we have in the past done some community outreach, community meetings, things like that to do educational process. After Mark goes through all of the stuff tonight, we're also looking for some input on direction on how to get the community more involved in the actual planning process of the Com Plan. So in the staff report that Mark had prepared on page two, there was a list of some ideas that we had come up with for how to outreach to the community. And we just wanted to bring that before the board to see if, you know, those ideas would work, if there were any other, you know, other input that you would like to give on how we can communicate and get more people involved in some community interaction. One of the thoughts that we're having is planning on having two more meetings coming up in August, night meetings. That would be in-person meetings where we would have invite the community to come in and have more of a work session with them, kind of go through what the Com Plan is, the basics of all the stuff that you guys have seen and heard already, but more of, you know, have workstations where there's maps on tables and they can say, you know, if you were to put multifamily somewhere, where would you put it? And more of an interactive kind of thing with the community. So on the list of things to kind of do that, to include them, there were seven different items, you know, Facebook, different social media aspects, email incentives, you know, to all of our, the people that are signed up for the DeForest newsletter, things like that, possibly postcards or an insert in the utility bill. And then posting like some kind of poster flyers at different community locations, the library, the bulletin boards, you know, at grocery stores and other areas around the place, just to kind of get the word out there to people who aren't focused on social media. And then possibly doing just a short article invitation in the DeForest Times. And then one of the things that we were looking at too is maybe offering to supply, you know, some light snacks, drinks, possibly, you know, some kind of childcare or something for people who aren't able to provide kind of any care for their children, mother away. Those are just different ideas. So we just want to get feedback on that kind of input. So if you guys have any ideas or would like to enhance on any of the ones that we have listed, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Do I need the board, yep, to Shidra?
I think another possible way to get community engagement is maybe collaborate with the school district. I know Debbie Brewster does an amazing job of getting newsletters out to all the parents and key communicators within the community. So I think just really reaching out that way would definitely spread the message relatively quickly. And I know that comes out the 15th and the 30th of every month.
Okay, thank you. I wrote that one down.
Good. Rebecca?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really, really appreciated this list. I kind of threw it out there to get some feedback from some of the people in the community. And actually, there was really positive feedback saying they really, really appreciated the depth and breadth of the ideas of communicating and engaging. So, good job. Thank you.
One of the other things I guess I probably should have said in my initial spiel was that there is some cost associated with some of these items, like the mailing of the postcards. I did do a little bit of research into that to mail it to the households. Part of the issue is timing, you know, we're looking at doing our first meeting, I think, August 5th. You know, so trying to get a mass mailing out before that might be difficult. The cost about is about fifteen to seventeen hundred dollars for that, to do an insert in the utility bill. That goes out, it will be, it will go out in the mail on July 30th. The approximate cost for that, for the insert is about three hundred dollars, but that's estimating it on one that we asked for in the past for them to give us a quote on. So I haven't gotten an official quote, but there is some costs associated with that and also like with the childcare type of thing. I did talk to Reese a little bit about that. We could potentially get some of the recreation workers to help out with that aspect, but there would be costs associated with that as well.
Okay. Bill?
Did we consider a survey with different questions?
A community survey with different questions. That's not considered for the actual workshop shop sessions.
Oh, as part of the seven, seven outlines, you could have number eight do another survey with a few different questions.
Sure.
We're asked before, I think the survey last fall was very informative. I consider, what was it, 600 people? It was good.
Oh, yeah.
Good sampling. You'd like a thousand, but, you know, a few different questions.
Sure.
Already asked before. Maybe redefine some of the questions that are in question.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly do something like that, too.
I mean, the cost for that would be
a few thousand dollars. To to put a survey together, to have it vetted by the people, to kind of have it tested, to put it in the Survey Monkey tool, to have it coded properly and then have it reported, you know, noteworthy expense.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, my comment is looking at the different items like the Facebook and Twitter and even a postcard and articles in the Times. Just, I think, or like the projects that I deal with, the point was is to always try to get somebody onto an email distribution list. So as long as, say, if we do the Facebook, you give them the link to get on the distribution list. So we hopefully keep building that distribution list. So it isn't quite as much of an expense. We won't have to do, say, the postcards every time, but we get hopefully a few hundred on the distribution list that we can constantly hit as we move forward. I'm assuming this, what, year-long process?
Thank you. Abby?
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's patience. I might, I have to be at home to watch my kids. So I, hopefully, maybe my husband will be home later and and I could come in person. But yeah, I I'll just agree with what Tristi Allen said, because I was also thinking about the school district and they have a community conversation coming up August 11th. So I wonder if they'd be willing to do a verbal announcement or displace, you know, some flyers on a table or something, at least to help with that second session, because that'll be a little bit after that. And I really agree, well, I really love this list. This is really good, really thorough, and I really appreciate it. And I also wanted to point out or give special attention to seeking out people or populations that, you know, might be underrepresented, underrepresented in our information. I think that's a good idea. And I don't know if this has already been done, so if it has, you can just ignore it. But I'm wondering about some of the senior living places in DeForest, like the Spring Brook condos, the Jefferson Square, the elderly housing off on Southbound Drive. I think it's called Town Square Apartments that are downtown. The apartments near the Forest Area Community and Senior Center. Those people living there and/or the property managers might have some good input. And what was the other thing? I think, I think the in-person sessions will be really valuable because they'll be, we'll be able to do back and forth, like giving information, but also getting input. And that's what I found really helpful with the school district's framework for the future. There was a lot of back and forth. And I think that can also clear up any misunderstandings as well. And I'll double check with my husband, but I, if you're interested, Reese, if you're interested, I might be available to help with the childcare part. Just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Shidra?
I also wanted to suggest that there, we don't, they don't meet as often anymore, but maybe also including like the local clergy group, because they are able to touch a lot of different people throughout the community. So that was another suggestion between the school district and the local clergy group. But then also, I didn't know if it would be possible to get like talking points that even your board could help disseminate information to make sure that it's a collective and collaborative effort to grow the feedback that we get from the community members.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, lots of good ideas. And Mark, welcome. So you're going to walk us through the neighborhood and housing chapter.
Yes, and thank you. And thanks, Brandy, for carrying my water there for a while as I was driving up here. So it would be probably useful to have that chapter up on the screen if it's possible to put it up, put it up there. I don't know. I'm gonna, it's gonna take me a while to figure that out. So just as a quick preface, I was reminded that while the Housing and Neighborhoods chapter has been out for, since May 7th or shortly thereafter, we we haven't really had a chance to talk about it with it in front of us. We've heard other people talk about it. You've heard me talk about the statutory basis for it, but we haven't gone through the chapter itself. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to to do that, talk about what's in there, what's not in there, maybe do some myth busting and get your initial feedback on it. As you read in the memo, we're not going to ask you or P and Z to approve it anytime soon. We thought getting into the next batch of chapters would be useful to kind of show how these ideas might play out on the ground through the land use planning that we're doing. So, or going to do. So, you know, I think it's going to sit for a while as is until we kind of get a little bit further along in the process. But with that, just talk a little bit about the chapter. You know, all the chapters are arranged similarly, at least the substantive ones. They have a cover page with that's kind of serves as a summary of the whole chapter. A set of goals and objectives and policies which are things that are required under the statute to include within the comprehensive plan. And then the bulk of the chapter talks about initiatives. The statute says we need to have quote-unquote programs. I don't like the word programs initiative sounds a little bit more, I don't know, modern. And so that's, those are the four that that take up the most, most of the chapter. And as I've mentioned before, there are some changes from the current to 2015 chapter that are being suggested here. But a lot of similarities and and one of the similarities, I think, appears at the goal that you see on the first page, that the village's housing mix should generally maintain single-family character. That was a clear and strong emphasis of the 2015 plan. It's perhaps a slightly lesser emphasis as currently drafted, because frankly, there's a lot of other issues that this chapter is trying to cover than the 2015 chapter, just in terms of length. It's about a third longer. And it's trying to address emerging issues based on market demand, changing demographics and other things, and trying to create a framework for the board and P and Z and staff to address, you know, the really hard issues that we're dealing with, with changes and proposals and what people seem to want for housing that sometimes is a single-family house and sometimes is not. So with that kind of long wind-up, I'm going to otherwise bust through this first section and move on to it, because the rest of it is really the details behind what you see on that first page. As I mentioned, the next page covers objectives and and policies. Again, some points of emphasis promoting a housing mix that reflects the village's desire to continue to be a family-oriented community and reflect the prevailing housing mix, which, generally speaking, has been about 60% single-family for the last 20 years at least. So we've had, that means we've had a number of single-family units that have been built and a number of multifamily built, units built to sort of in rough proportion to one another over that period of time. As you know, the multiple family comes in big chunks. And so it'd be, it's a lot more visible when it does come and sort of comes up, up and down. So we haven't had multiple family units permitted in the village for a few years, except for condominium units. And now we're at another one of those periods where we're having some more permits and requests. The chapter's more about housing, more than just about housing. It's about creating neighborhood environments that promote a number of things, attractive living environments, including a mixture of housing types in most neighborhoods as opposed to saying, this is the single-family neighborhood only. This is the duplex neighborhood only. This is the multiple-family area only. Tends to promote greater interaction among residents. It tends to enable move up within a neighborhood without leaving the neighborhood. We've heard from people in different neighborhoods, Conservancy Place and others that said, hey, it was great to get into a condo, maybe to rent, and now I bought my house there. That's sort of the the concept and the idea. Other aspects of neighborhoods, promoting natural resources and parks and open space, which is a kind of a, as we looked at the survey and heard from the survey, are key elements. So keeping, keeping the forest green as it does grow. So the the objectives are a little bit more specific than the goal. The policies are a little bit more specific still. They're generally reactive. So when we get a proposal, we compare them to some of these policies that you see on the page. And there's not any particular one that I want to highlight, but if you recall our conversation on June 1st, there are some buttons that we do need to press to meet the statutory requirements. And some of these policies, press those buttons.
Hey, Mark, could you talk more directly into the microphone, please?
I can.
Thanks.
So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, pause at intervals and take any questions on the things you've heard so far with the recognition that I'm going to get into more detail on the initiatives after that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Abby. I didn't, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. One comment, I I agree with the, you know, emphasis on protecting environmental resources and natural spaces. I think if we look more comprehensively at housing and, you know, like you said, you know, maintaining the single-family home character, but also looking at different housing options. The reality of the situation is, is we, you know, can't grow outward forever and, you know, and land, there is a limit to land and expansion. And and one of the strategies that we can use to deal with that is to grow up a little bit more than out. And I know you'll talk about later about thoughtful citing of higher density housing, but I think that fit, those two fit together. And then a question related to, I think it's the last initiative on the first page, Advanced Neighborhood Development Planning. Is that basically what we already do? Or is this a little bit different thing that we will be doing? If you could explain what that bit more?
Sure. That that initiative is the least developed of the four so far, but it's also probably one of the two that is the most continuous from the current comprehensive plan. So there is a, an initiative that promotes quality neighborhood development and conceptual planning of neighborhoods in advance of getting subdivision plots to to give the community a feel and flavor for what might be coming and also to give the developer a sense for the village's reaction before thousands, many thousands of dollars are spent on a plan. And also to create a framework where we have a neighborhood that might consist of, you know, six or seven different ownerships and how those different pieces will fit together over time. The, what's different is our suggestion that there would be, within the comprehensive plan, a specific neighborhood development plan for the West River Road corridor, basically from the campground down to Conservancy Place on the west side of River Road. As you know, it's, it's a hot area for development and develop proposals. We thought it would be timely and ideal to have an updated framework for how those different parcels might develop over time. That, this was one idea that it appeared to make the most sense to wait for the land use chapter to catch up, because there's a lot of interaction between a future land use map for the village as a whole and what might be appropriate within the rest, West River Road corridor. In other words, if we are planning significant commercial development in other parts of the village, well, then this West River Road corridor maybe doesn't have as much commercial development. Might not be the best example, but it's just a general idea of of keeping the whole in mind before we dive forward on components.
Okay. I actually like what Abby, kind of on the back of what Abigail was saying about, you know, eventually we're going to kind of stop at our borders and then what? One of the things that I think would be very good in our planning is when we know we're going to be having that higher density, that maybe it be planned sooner in the development process rather than later, like say for, I'm just going to use a Conservancy because that's, that's a prime example, a recent one. The higher density was done later in the project rather than early in the project. And then you had a lot of misunderstandings. And I think if, if you're going to have that in a development, when at all possible, one, that it be very well communicated to people, but also maybe even have that earlier in the process, if that makes sense.
It, it does make sense. And, and, yeah, for the very reasons you've mentioned, you know, I have made similar recommendations to, you know, developers and developments, you know, is get that multiple family, if it's planned.
Yeah.
Was there, get it in as early as you can. The challenge with Conservancy Place is at least for that area, no one wanted to build multifamily up until, you know, very recently in that neighborhood, or at least higher-density multifamily. So then you're left with a bit of a, you know, challenging situation where you, you've got your opposers, you know, already in the, in the neighborhood. It's the same with paths and other things that, you know, people didn't anticipate. It's better to get them in early.
Yeah, it's kind of like what happened down at Savannah Brooks, is that where the park? That one went in real early in the process. And so when people were deciding to move there to build their homes, that was already there. They knew that that was there. There was no question. So there just wasn't that issue. So I think that's going to be really important.
It's a great idea and hold, hold that, because I, I, I think there's an opportunity to even drop that kind of concept into this chapter.
Thank you. Other questions? Bill?
Yeah, I want to compliment you on the, the layout of, of this. It's very informative, very speaks out at you compared to 2015. You spoke about the radical changes from 2015. They are. They don't reflect what was in the survey on some of the items. And now is the time to change those before we move forward, but I don't know if the rest of the board wants to do that. I mean.
Yeah, could I, could I work through the chapter before we talk about?
Sure. Sure. Why don't you keep going?
Okay. So, um, so the first initiative, I'm on, I'll go to the page on 53, is achieve a housing mix that preserves village character while accommodating choice. Now, it could have and maybe should read, achieve a housing mix that preserves village, single-family character while accommodating choice, because that's the intended emphasis of that initiative. So you, you see the effort in that initiative and throughout the chapter, I hope, to tie to both survey results and to market conditions. We had significant support in the survey for additional single-family housing, more affordable than most of the new stuff or all of the new stuff is, is being built at, but single-family housing nonetheless. This initiative suggests that the village, in its review of new development proposals, will try to maintain an overall percentage village-wide of 60% single-family units. It's a little different than what the current policy is. The current policy is more complicated. The current, current policy, the, the attempt is to implement it on a neighborhood by neighborhood by neighborhood basis. And the current policy suggests that because we have areas that are planned for exclusively multiple-family development, we may need to balance that out by having greater percentages of single-family in other areas. We talked quite a bit at the Planning and Zoning Commission about this policy over the last few months, including at the February P and Z meeting. I think we had a, an hour discussion on the issue. The P and Z suggestion was let's get more general and give more flexibility to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the board and developers. And, you know, back away a little bit from the, this current policy, which is a little bit stricter and a little bit harder to meet. Now, you're not P and Z. You might have a different opinion and you can certainly, you know, try to direct that back or, you know, work back to that previous policy. I would, if you do, we can go, go that direction. I would, you know, encourage you to do a couple of things. First off, we, we do need to keep in mind that the village does need, need to by law provide a variety of housing types. So we can't say 95% single-family and probably get away with it. And, you know, the second thing I would encourage is that we go away from the, and I'm, I was a part of this, the relatively extreme complexity of the current policy, which just serves to befuddle people, I think. And we can figure out a simpler way to carry it out. So, but, but anyway, that's the emphasis of that first initiative is, is let's promote that single-family character. Let's try to keep it 60%. Let's monitor that over time to see how we're doing. And then the information on page 54. And then the information on page five, four should have read like, this is going to be hard to do because the market is moving in a different direction. But these seven, eight, 10 arrows are things that can be done to try to continue to boost, bolster the single family market uh, in the, in the community. Now, ongoing marketing parade of homes, uh, looking to narrower lots and, and, uh, small, smaller lots and narrower streets. Savannah Brooks and the recent proposals that you saw there is an example of that. Collaborating with the school district, continuing to grow the park and recreational system as amenities for families, uh, and single family housing. And do things like you're doing right out here and the door, door today, kind of frame friendly events and spaces and places to build up that environment. So, yeah, if I'm rewriting this, this part, I would say something like this is all going to be hard to stay at 60% single family. Other communities in your area are finding it very difficult, but these are some ideas to try to make it, make it work. So, you know, that was the first initiative, uh, in the chapter. Again, it was a carryover more or less in theme from the 2015 plan, but a generalization and a more flexibility on the percentage compared to the 2015 plan. So then the next, uh, initiative talks about, okay, if we're going to have 40% of the community in something besides single family housing, what are the strategies that we should employ? Uh, to minimize the stress and maximize the value of those developments on the community. And, you know, Rebecca, I think your idea comes in here is encourage those components of the development to develop first, you know, where practical or early in the development. So everyone knows, you know, what they're buying into, you know, recognizing that not everyone, you know, re, reads the PDP, uh, when they, when they buy a house. Uh, so we can definitely drop that in here. This was, this chat, this particular initiative was saying, hey, if we're going to get these development proposals, what are some of the criteria that we should use? In preparing the future land use map in the comprehensive plan to put them in the right spots and to make sure that in terms of design, uh, and other traffic and other features, they fit within the setting they're located. So it's not intended to say, let's go, let's bring it on. It's, it's about, we're going, it's a, it's a recognition that we are going to have this type of development in the community. There's good things about it. Provides place for seniors, for workforce, for families that can't afford or a new transition, you know, we can talk about the values. But the intent of the initiative was, you know, let's think about geography and about design and how we can maybe minimize some of the people's concerns when they hear a multifamily. Proposals. So if you look at page five, five, it's the, it, it, you know, in, in the drafting, we tried to talk a little bit about, uh, the different types of, 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 uh, non-single family housing and their value within the community. Thank you. Not just, we're not just talking about apartment buildings, but, uh, you know, townhouses, duplexes, those kind of things. And also try to recognize that the community survey was in fact mixed on people's opinions related to this. So I want to be, you know, really upfront about that. I know you want me to, um, that, you know, some people are all, all in favor of this. Other people have concerns. So let's figure out what those concerns are and try to address them through doing better on locating and designing these projects or encouraging, uh, the developers to do so. Got a question over here.
Rebecca, I didn't know he was done.
That's okay. Thank you. No, I, I may have interrupted him. I'm not sure. Anyway, uh, I, some, something that I was talking with Michelle about, uh, earlier last week was literally about this topic. And, um, one of the things that I personally have a concern about when it, when we talk about affordable housing is I want the housing to be something that the people who live in it can be proud of. And that they can feel like they're actually a part of our community and not, oh, they live there. So I think that's going to be, at least in my mind, that's extremely important. I don't want little cookie cutter type boxes that are ugly. I want something that actually helps to complement our, our community. Thoughtfully, uh, located, obviously, so that they don't feel like they are on the outskirts of town. But at the same time, we need to take into account where we're situating it so as to make transition properly. So I know that, and I know that was something that, that's very important, I think. And I think a lot of people, at least the people that I've had communications with, I think that is probably one of the primary concerns is making sure that they're not what you see in more urban areas.
Right. So, you know, when, when you, you could almost do a word association with a lot of people and you put, you, you put the term density in front of, uh, many people. And the word they may associate is crime, problems, traffic, rather than, you know, pride or place to live. Or, you know, a place to transition, you know, as you're younger or older to and from. Or a place where, you know, people that we're employing in our community could live. So, um, I, I think dealing with that and, and there's some good reason because a lot of higher density projects in the past have been not built that way. They've been built very poorly, cheaply, and they've deteriorated very quickly. And so I think that part of this is to try to, you know, acknowledge that and to, to address that. So, you know, there's two, two types of, of, of strategies being suggested here. One of them is, uh, right on page five, uh, six, and these are less visual, but important nonetheless. Uh, including the neighborhood early on in the process, uh, connecting landlords with resources or potential developers with resources to make the, sure the project is of appropriate quality. One of the things that I think, you know, we have done pretty well and can continue to do well is involving protective services personnel early in the design process. So we visited, for example, Cottage Grove with our fire department, with our police department. And it, this may sound silly, but you know, the police department, you know, they looked at a storage situation in the garage there and said, that is a bad idea. There was a little hiding space behind the storage locker area. So we learned from that. We took their advice. We designed safety into the, you know, this project that, you know, wasn't as prominent in the Cottage Grove one. So, uh, you know, that's something that we'll, you know, continue to do, not a very visible thing or maybe a, uh, exciting thing, but really, you know, super important. And then there's other strategies and I am uncomfortable with the busyness of this graphic, but this is more about design. So what are the characteristics of sighting and design for higher density housing that serve to promote pride, serve to integrate them best into the community? Create lasting value in addition to a good place to live for people that are in that 40% group that aren't in a single family house. So, um, you know, the images attempt to show good examples of some of the characteristics. Some of the characteristics, you know, again, very small at the bottom, locate in a neighborhood or vibrant mixed use setting like a downtown. Assure adequate road utility and service capacity that we've got, you know, them in the right spots to handle traffic and other things. Uh, select sites with high public visibility and access, including to jobs in the region. Uh, you know, so that, so we're not tucking them in a corner and hoping things are going to end up okay. Or saying, well, if we're going to accept this 40%, here's the kind of leftover space that no one else wants to build in, you can have it. Doesn't work very well, uh, you know, later on in particular. You know, prioritizing all, uh, access for bikes and walking, recognizing that, you know, while many people might have a car, maybe they're two people without two cars. And so walking and, and cycling need to be, you know, options. And, you know, maybe seniors that don't have access to a car anymore. Similarly, citing near parks, schools, shopping, commercial and community services, important elements. Uh, we've talked about those before. And then, um, uh, another point is ensuring high quality materials and design regardless of desired price points. You know, that's sort of easy to say when rents are going to be 1600 a month. It's harder to say when you're going to try to hit an affordable rent of, you know, 10, a thousand or 1100 a month, which is where that affordable range is going to be for some of these projects. So, um, that's where connecting, you know, developers to resources is important, whether it's us, tax credits or whether it's through redevelopment planning. Uh, and tax incremental financing support potentially to make sure that the quality stays high, even if the rents, you know, are not high. Blending more affordable developments into the broader community and other criteria, scaling buildings and sites to respect and provide a healthy connection to the setting. You know, those are things that we can always improve on, uh, as we look forward to new projects in, in, near the neighborhoods. Uh, incorporating amenities to provide a source of pride and a place to enjoy life. So folks aren't, you know, just being warehoused in a particular location, but view it as a place to live and, and enjoy. You know, and relying not necessarily on walling, higher density housing off from the rest of the community, literally, you know, but using other techniques, good design, landscape buffers, other things to, uh, to integrate them and, and weave them into the fabric of the community and the neighborhood they're, they're in. So the idea with these design and sighting criteria is that when we work on our future land use map in the very near future, we'll try to deploy these criteria and see which areas do better and which areas do worse. Which locations are on the path network, uh, close to, you know, uh, visible, close to transportation corridors, but not, you know, the leftover sites that no one else wants. So, um, you know, that'll be our challenge. And I think that's the reason why, uh, it's important to kind of move forward with the rest of these chapters to see, you know, which sites and which parts of the community do well against these criteria and which may not do as well. And therefore would be more appropriate for a single family housing or industrial development or some other type of use. The, the, we've, I've talked about that neighborhood initiative probably enough for tonight. The, the other initiative that I wanted to, that I didn't talk about yet is, I'm getting myself all mixed up here. Is the third one, which reads, support affordable housing for DeForest seniors and workforce. So this grows from the, the, the study that I was involved with, um, over the course of the late fall and winter for DeForest and Windsor, where we identified a need for, uh, um, housing that was affordable to the, the senior population. Recognizing that their incomes aren't necessarily, necessarily going up in general. They've been real stagnant over the last 10 years. And for the local workforce, the folks that earn in the $50,000 range, uh, uh, per year. Um, and so this was a, an effort to say, hey, we've got this need in the community and we tried to summarize, uh, that. We tried to define terms because the terms affordable workforce, housing have thousands of different definitions. If you're a developer, it means one thing. If you're a, uh, housing advocate, it means another. It's kind of like density, you know, uh, in that way. So we tried to define what it means in the context of this planning effort. So in, if, so for instance, affordable housing has a cost that requires no more than 30% of a household's income. And, you know, a, a family, I think this is a family of four, a low income family in DeForest generally earns less than $82,000 per year. So I, as I, I think I mentioned before, probably casually, we're not talking about pulling people from under the bridge. These are folks that are living in the community, you know, have one job, two jobs perhaps, but are, are not pulling in three, uh, three-figure incomes. So the, uh, um, the rest of the chapter talks about, um, you know, I, I knew this is going to be controversial. So I tried to explain it and provide rationale, you know, as, as much as possible and refer to the survey because we do have, you know, we did have support, I think, for, uh, uh, affordable senior housing, pretty broad support. And we had less support, uh, for affordable housing for non seniors. I think that, you know, that's a fair, uh, fair read of the survey results. What I tried to do with the rest of this chat, this section, and maybe again, it was a little too much and we can work on this. Is, okay, how are we going to promote affordable housing in the, in the forest as we defined it here for the workforce and seniors? So there's a variety of different potential techniques. Uh, one of them is zoning. And one of them that I think generated a lot of heat in the community was a suggestion that then perhaps the current maximum, uh, density within the village's standard zone, multiple family zoning district ought to be increased. Um, that would bring, uh, the density in line with what, for example, the park apartments was built at. You know, that did it under PUD zoning, uh, the town square. There's about twice the density of the current multiple family zoning district. Now that was able to be done because it's in the downtown zoning district. So the suggestion was maybe, you know, that should be the standard rather than the exception. Or that's, people wouldn't have to jump through hoops or find a downtown site to make that happen. If the community or the board or cows not ready for that, then, you know, that can be stricken. And, you know, there's still opportunities to go through plan unit development and other processes to get to higher densities. I think Rebecca has another question.
Go ahead. Yeah, on, on that subject right there. Um, you know, I can see in future developments where there's not existing housing, potentially having something like that. But I think in the community where there's housing already, I think that would be a real stretch to get community support.
So where there's existing development already around the area.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of the feedback that I've been getting over the past several months. Primarily because that's not what they all, you know, that's not why they moved here, you know? But in the, in new development areas, I can see that potentially being a possibility. Because people who would be moving to those community, that part of the community, that's what they would be expecting.
Kind of plays in your timing issue. People would know upfront.
Exactly. Again, it's that timing issue.
So, Jim?
I guess along with that, I would question what becomes a new development. Is it directly across the street or is it?
Yeah, you have 40 now.
Away.
Yeah.
Good question. The other, the other question I had, I noted when you were, um, a couple of pages back, had listed looking at conversion potential. We have a, a, a big demand for senior housing now. We have other, other multifamily or workforce housing. Will that demand continue? And if, if it doesn't at the same rate, can those buildings be converted to multifamily or some other purpose?
I guess to more clarify, I guess my point with the, what is a new development? I just look back. I forget exactly. So we have like subdivisions come in and I think it speaks to what we've done in the past as far as like making sure there is variability in the housing and different, um, quality. Cause I remember say when Chapel Green came in, that there is a large concern that that was going to be a subdivision that was going to be below our typical DeForest standards. I would say that concern was brought up in Conservancy Place when that's creating subdivision came in. And I think we've done a good job with, with those developments that now they feel like they are part of the, the community. And I don't think people necessarily distinguish them as not DeForest or a place that they don't want to live. So I like to think that as we cite these multifamilies, that we can take the same amount of care so they, residents there still feel part of the DeForest and. so they, residents there still feel part of the DeForest and people don't look down on them.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, along those lines, yeah, I had my reservations about, you know, what's at the new one park place. I've done looked at it, took a real long look at it, stopped, asked people that live there, how do you like this? You know, it's smaller lots. And they all said they, they like it. So, you know, I was against that before years ago. But it was like you said, times have changed. People don't want big lots. And, you know, if they want to live 10 feet away from their next-door neighbor, it's not for me, but there's a different market. The Cottage Grove project, going and seeing it and having the police fire guys look at it was very informative. I was standing there when the police go, well, look at this, you know, look at that. And that's important. I'm glad we, we added that aspect to it. But we as board members are playing zone member, members have to go out and look at some of these projects to see what we're, we're talking about or look at the land. This community engagement, Randy and I was, had one last year about this time. Boy, it was, that was a hostile environment, wasn't it? Yeah. But later I engaged some of the residents and talked to them. And we found neutral ground. It's not, it's not so much having the community presentation, but dialogue after where you've separated the people. I think that's important too, is have another meeting and feel out the residents without, say, the developer there and find out if there is common ground. And I think by talking to some of the major residents that are objecting to that, we did find neutral ground.
Abby?
Yeah, I was just wondering with the, I guess the proposal of a 40% increase with density for the RM4 zoning. I guess I was wondering how that works with advanced neighborhood development? Because, you know, as we talked earlier, you know, certain neighborhoods, it might make more sense to have multifamily housing than others based on that criteria. Does, you know, does the advanced neighborhood planning allow us to, you know, even though there might be a certain maximum for density, does it allow us to have some flexibility within that, depending on which neighborhood we're looking at?
Yeah, the village has frankly too many zoning districts. So that, that just happens to be the densest district. The RM3 district focuses more on sort of townhouse scale or duplex scale development. So, you know, as a neighborhood was planned, then, and the density, the desired maximum density was determined, developers would then petition for rezoning and you would approve zonings that sort of matched that, that plan. So increasing the density or in other, in other ways affecting the rules for what a different zoning district, district can include is a lot different than actually mapping that district in a particular area or not. That's a different question of zoning that area or zoning that district. We don't have a lot of, very few, if any, vacant parcels in the village that are zoned RM4. It's almost always, and I think this is good policy, almost always in concert with a development proposal. So people can have at least a sense for what they're going to get if that land is zoned that way. The final thing I wanted to mention, I know we're kind of moving beyond Cal period is the, the, this initiative does talk about, you know, what can we do to kind of financially make these things work? Not just about zoning. Density is important for affordable housing. If you can get more units per acre, you get more rent and you can make the buildings look better, even if the rents are, you know, below market. But, you know, if you can't get that density or you, you can get some increased density, but you still can't make the numbers work, you know, there's low-income housing tax credits. There's other state and federal programs that folks are, you know, skilled at and going after. But there's also a, a village role potentially in providing incentives for that type of development with the idea being that you don't sacrifice quality and those features that were, were on that chart. You get that quality, but you make it work so that the rents can be $1,000, $1,100 a month and still have that quality, sort of equalize that. That may be particularly important if we have redevelopment projects that are geared to affordability because they're expensive to pull off. So there's some ideas certainly in that chapter related to that, and I definitely wanted to mention that that was there and why it was there. You know, ultimately it's going to be up to the village board on a case-by-case basis as to whether to incentivize developments that way. We currently don't have our TIDS generally structured in a way to allow that. So there, that would require amendments to attack incremental district project plan. So we're a few steps away from, you know, kind of operationalizing that.
Rebecca?
As a policy.
Just touching on, you had mentioned a, kind of briefly earlier and kind of got into it right there. I did have a question. I, I know, related to TIF because this question always comes up. Now with senior housing, they have, my understanding is they have an exemption when it comes to school taxes. Is that correct on the property taxes or is that not correct?
It's not. The, the, the village board has approved exemptions for senior projects where it has determined that the residents would not be using, for example, the parks or not be using them very often.
Okay.
But if we're, if we're talking about, you know, now I'm offering my opinion. If it's an independent senior where there's, you know, they're out in the community more than, you know, me. I'm going to qualify in two years, by the way, for senior housing.
I'm way past that.
Then, uh, then it doesn't make sense to exempt that type of project from a, from a service that they're clearly using. But I, I, the village board has in the past where, where, you know, folks are not getting out in the community.
I guess to get to the, the heart of my question is, could you explain why TIF would be, I, you kind of touched on it earlier, but I want you to draw just a little bit more on it. Why would TIF be beneficial to use for senior and/or public housing?
If, well, probably going to have public housing, you know, much if, in the community. If, if anything, it'd be replacing existing. But for private development, if the village has a particular standard of 35% decorative material or whatever it happens to be, doesn't want to reduce that standard. The developer, the affordable housing says, but if I can only charge $1,000 a month rent to keep it affordable, I can't afford 35%. So if you want to maintain that quality and some of the other qualities, it may, you know, be advisable to bring some money to the table to make it happen. And, you know, and that's not to say you throw all your rules that, you know, that the TID, you know, TID project, that, that development would still have to pay back the, the value like you've, you've seen with recent TID proposals. It just might be a tool to actually enable that to happen.
That, that, that was kind of what I was trying to get at because that, that's what I was hearing and I just wanted to make sure I did understand that. Thank you.
All right, Mark, Steve?
So I, I think we still need feedback from the board. Do we put this on a future Cal agenda? Or do we have Brandy collect questions from the individuals on the board or both?
Maybe both.
Thought this was very informative.
Yeah, I think both.
Helps backfill the draft.
Yeah, I think questions and comments and then, you know, maybe we come back at another meeting and I kind of rumble through those questions and comments and, and we can have some more dialogue on them. That sounds great.
Does that work for everyone? Thumbs up? All right.
I got an additional comment though. I wonder if we have sort of a deadline to get comments to Brandy or Mark and then it could be incorporated in our next discussion. That would be appropriate.
We have the public involvement in August that will, you know, for comprehensive planning work, pretty much occupy all of our time, in my opinion. So I would suggest that maybe you allow those sessions to happen and perhaps comments back by September 1st and then we reengage in September.
Does that work?
Okay. I think that gets us through this, this agenda. I'm assuming we are, we don't have any staff updates that we need to do. So I'm surveying the, the room. If not, what I would do is entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole and then we'll take a couple of minutes and then get into our, our board meeting.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, here we go. Call the regular village board meeting of July 20th to order at 6:00 PM. I would ask Lou to note roll call. And I would ask Colleen to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements. Village Board will convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discussion of negotiating strategy with respect to the provision of financial incentives to Regal Development LLC for business development within TID number eight and with respect to amendments to existing development agreements and a new development agreement for Savannah Brooks subdivision. Five consent agenda. Does anybody want this, anything separated out? Otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Jim?
I'll make a second to approve, but I had a couple of comments in the minutes.
All right. Did you make the motion, Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, we have Colleen and then Jim. So comments? Jim?
Yes, I am pulling it up. There was one that said Bill Simpson, so instead of Jim Simpson.
Is that your brother?
That's my brother. He must have been here that night. I can't, I can't pull it up right now, but.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is.
I think it's a six.
And then there was a comment that they had where it says Brian Goodman Conservancy Trail. And I didn't know there was a conservancy trail. Could you check his address or maybe ask Brian what it is? Blue Stump Trail. Brian Goodman, his address needs to be corrected.
Okay.
And that was on the July 6th. And on the special board meeting, that was July 14th, under item 5.1, it said that trustee Tashidra Allen abstained. And I believe that was Abby that abstained. Is that correct?
I think it's written correctly.
Okay, thank you. And I see that one, but please do Bill Simpson, the gym and the address change. Thanks. I'll spend in a correct or whatever spell check. Thank you.
And any other comments or edits? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on, we'll have appearances before the board. We'll start with some of the, the general appearances. I think most of the appearances that we have here are related to projects in our hearing and, and others. So. Wait a minute, I gotta look over here. Project related, so. All right, then the one appearance that we have that isn't.
You've got a public hearing on the agenda next.
Do you want to do that before appearances? All right, happy to. Okay, we'll do that. We'll move then to 6.1 and open at 6:13 a public hearing on related amendments to the village comp plan and preliminary development plan for Savannah Brooks Plan Unit Development. We have someone speaking. Mike, are you? Jerry? John, the whole gang's here.
I think we also, somebody from Mike Hawken's office is available online too, if you have any questions.
Mike, you're gonna have to talk really close.
We may have somebody from Mike Hawken's office that's available to answer questions online too, if you have questions.
Yeah, this is Andy Meesman from Snyder and Associates. I'm logged into my wife's computers reading this, Heather Grogan, but this is Andy Meesman with Snyder, if there's any questions.
Thank you.
This is a project that we were on your agenda just a few weeks ago for a conceptual review. So you've all, you know, seen it and it really hasn't changed in any significant way, I think, Don, since that time. So if you have any questions about the overall nature of the project, we'd be happy to answer them. I don't know, do you want us to comment at all on the, the TIF question during this? That you're going to go into closed session on this item or not?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, let's leave that for later on.
All right, anyway, we can answer your questions and our, our consultant from Snyder can answer questions if you have any, but it's basically the same as what you saw.
Okay.
Previously.
Good. Okay. Maybe just give a summary of what we're talking about. We're going from the commercial lots to.
Right, Lot 1 along Highway 19 east of Williamsburg Way was a large commercial lot in the final development plan as originally conceived for this plat. And as you all know, a lot has changed in the economy with regard to commercial parcels. This was platted and designated for that use many, many years ago. And there have been a lot of changes. That's in the almost pre-Amazon era. If you, that's kind of ironic considering what happened today with the owner. So anyway, we know a lot of things have changed in, in the marketplace for, especially for retail uses. And we also know that the village, at many meetings, officials, elected officials have expressed a desire for more housing options in the village. And I think, Don, Don, you can comment on this, but felt, hey, this is a good opportunity. We've got this property here that's sort of a stranded commercial site that there has not been much activity in and may not be much activity in for a while. And we've done a great job with housing in Savannah Brooks and this could be another parcel with some tremendous housing potential, which would be good for the village and move this land forward. So that's really what's happening and Don has a mix and I know, Don, if you want to discuss that, but it's mostly single-family, but there are some duplex condo lots that are spread through the, through the property. And we've had good success with, with those and getting a high-quality product on those. So that's the, that's the goal. And we have eliminated the entrance on the easterly entrance to Highway 19, which actually the village staff, if I remember, I think Mark Roffers said, hey, how, what would you think of doing that? Which is a good idea. And we jumped on that and said, yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea because we really don't need another. And we jumped on that and said, yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea, because we really don't need another entrance exit traffic safety issue, et cetera, on 19. And that is incorporated into our into our plan. So I don't know, if you two guys want to add some other things.
Yeah, just to give a little perspective, prior to what we'd like to make the change, there was a total of 133 single-family units in Savannah Brooks. And this change would add an addition of 49 lots of those 49, 14 are, could be duplex condos for a total of a 63 additional housing units. Taking up that 14 acres and we're changing some of the existing roads, but just to net it out, so you understand it's additional 49 lots.
And and there was a realignment of the roads because of the TIF line, is that?
Yeah, Mike, Mike Hawkins, I think came up with a good solution for that. That was pointed out that we had to adhere to the the tax parcel boundary, so we didn't violate any TIF rules. And we came up with a configuration that takes care of that problem.
So after the suggestion of eliminating the Highway 19 easterly entrance, we realigned the roads, okay? And then the subject came up of trying to not have one homeowner have two separate tax bills, one in the TIF district and one not in. So that's where Snyder realigned everything to, so the lot lines would match the the TIF boundary. So homeowners would only get one tax bill instead of two.
It's always a good thing. Okay, Don, do you have something else?
We have our presentation. If you remember, we had pictures of Savannah Village in Wana Key, right along Highway 113, we were making the point of.
Making the point of how, sorry about that, making the point of how important it is to have a berm. And there was about 10 acres along Highway 113. And we converted that from commercial property to housing. And it worked out very good. It also will add a lot more value to the people living there having a berm along Highway 19. It'll, it'll give it a nice feel. And with the park, the little park that's in there, we have one in in another project, we call it a beer garden. Mainly because you can bring your own beer. And it's, it's just a very, there's not a lot of park equipment or anything, but it's just a really nice feel. Because we, we really went overboard, we, we worked hard to build the the park that's in Savannah Brooks. And this park would be kind of a compliment to it, but a place where you just kind of go and have a little fire pit and meet people.
Good, thank you. Are there questions? Rebecca?
Yeah, sorry. That park along the side that you guys have proposed. There, the only entrance to it that I'm seeing would be from Highway 19, correct?
I know.
No, we're, right now, the, I'm making reference to the park. If you could bring the the new homestead plat up, perhaps.
I'm talking the park, that that existing little, where there's that access road for the Dane County.
Nope, there, on that map right there, if you scroll, so you can go up, okay, down, yep, that outlaw one, that's pedestrian access to that.
Yes.
Oh, is there going to be a street or just a walkway?
Just a walkway from there, and then there's currently and would continue to be Highway 19 access for vehicles.
The reason why I'm saying is I was out there just, I think it was yesterday, actually. And I was there, I don't know, it must have been 4:30ish. And the traffic was awful trying to get out of that place. So I'm, and then there's buildings on on there that need to be got rid of and stuff like that. But my, my main concern was having access to it for the community, you know, that's living there without having to go out onto 19 to get to it.
Our, our concern was and remains that we don't want a road through the neighborhood going to it. We put that outlaw in there so we could have pedestrian access, you know, a walkway, bike path, probably dead, correct me if I'm wrong, a 10-foot blacktop trail. You know, so you could bike, walk, whatever to it. We feel that for the community, this community, it would not be a good thing to have, you know, a regular road through the community going to it. It just makes it a little bit harder to have a nice peaceful street if that's a main thoroughfare to a potentially very busy park.
Other questions, Bill?
Yeah, a comment question. 20 years ago, Sunnybrook changed their plan from premier homes and then all of a sudden lesser homes. That caused quite a stir. It was 20 years ago, I don't know if many remember that. The same situation is occurring now. $600,000 homes and now the 325, it's a different clientele per se. Have you talked to these people? Would they accept the $325,000 homes in their community? I have no problem with it.
We, we modeled this after Savannah Village with the covered bridges in Wana Key. And it's so funny, when you make a presentation, I'll never forget it, I was in Wana Key making a presentation. And there were people that came in and they said, Mr. Tierney, these are condos, you will never see one of them hit 400,000. The first one hit 400,000. So in in the business we're in, you can be criticized, people can, no matter what you do.
Too cheap, not cheap enough, too expensive, not expensive enough.
So we, after looking at the situation, the quality of everything we've always done is great quality. If if there is condos that are twin homes, I've been criticized because they're not going to be good enough. They're going to be too expensive. It doesn't matter what you do, but I can guarantee you one thing, the quality will be great, but it is nice. Because there's a lot of people out there right now that have four-bedroom, two-story homes. And they want to downsize. And they want to have a place where there's zero entry, meaning you can drive in the garage, and that's the way we'd set it up. There'd be no steps, you could take a wheelchair and go anywhere. And and that's really what we need. Because if you don't have a place like that where you can have zero entry, we can go in the garage, no steps. And you have a really nice home, it doesn't have to be huge. And I can't think of one person, after I've gone to the duplex condos. And you always say, if you really want to know what somebody's all about, go and see where they've been. Follow up on them.
Dad, if I could add on to that, when we first did the expansion on Savannah Village, we had some people criticizing us because we had some smaller lots. And I forget the dollar amount at the time, but they were a little less. And Don here always would say, you know, when the kids are playing together, it's better if the kids aren't saying, well, you're from the rich part of the neighborhood and you're from the poor part of the neighborhood. If they all live down the street, the kids don't care, as long as they got a nice house, look, you know what I mean? And everybody takes care of it. And we've always tried to sprinkle in different lot sizes and we got the same thing going on here. In the last couple of years, we've learned that there is a good market for a slightly smaller lot and people like it. And if you go to Kilkenny Farms, where we first tried this in Wana Key, we put in 63 lots that are much smaller. Well, not, not a lot, but they're smaller. And we were worried at first, what would be the outcome? And they sold so fast that everybody loves them and you drive in there and you don't really know the difference. And the main thing is you hold up the quality of the architecture so that, you know, it isn't like a, this is the dumpy area. And it's not at all what we're trying to do here. We're trying to hold up.
And I think on top of that, if you drive through our communities, there could be a parade home that sold for 1.2 million. And in about a two-minute walk, you can go to a home that was 425. They look good, they look great, and it's never brought up. Matter of fact, people don't realize that that's a monster home or that is a, an average size home. And and in today's, the people that are, we're trying to find a place where people that have the big two-story homes, steps all over the place, tri-levels, you name it, every place you go, there's steps. And our grading would be done so that you would have a beautiful home. It wouldn't be huge, but it would look as good as any home we have anywhere.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Don, yeah, I have faith in the quality of your construction. It's just, you know, somebody bought into the neighborhood of $600,000 homes. And all of a sudden, something is, is presented later. And I, I don't want phone calls on that. And it's just from 20 years ago, Sunnybrook, times have changed, but you have your name on it, so.
Well, you know, I take that as a compliment, Bill, because if you go to Savannah Brooks, I know a house that sold for 450. And when you drive down the street, you're gonna say it's 625.
I've seen, I've been through there. And yeah, you've done good work, thanks, Don.
I'll also say that the appraisers are kind of on to the program too. In the old days, an appraiser, no offense to appraisers, would be potentially slightly lazy. And they would say, if this house is within this circle, that's what it's worth. But they are, you know, we've done a lot of different lot sizes and they really look at that a lot more now. And so if you're a homeowner, that would be the big concern would be the appraisal. And we have not seen any of those problems.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for on Savannah Brooks? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 6:28 and thank you, gentlemen, for for joining us. The next item under appearances is John Seibert. Seibert?
It's, it's Seibert. John, are you on the line?
I am.
Hey, we're ready for you to share your screen. This is John Seibert. I'm just gonna introduce him with Regal Development. This is something that he's giving a presentation related to an item at the end of the agenda. And it's a development proposal that he has for today. And he's gonna go into a presentation and kind of show everybody where that is and so forth. So we'll let you take it away, John, that's okay.
All right, thank you very much, Michelle, I appreciate it. And we're trying to get it to, there we go. I tried to share screen earlier tonight and Michelle called me, she said, your sharing screen is working. So all of a sudden, you might guess, if you're trying to move, it gets into technical difficulties. But I appreciate the opportunity to be able to visit with you folks this evening. And I apologize that I'm unable to be there logistically wise in person, because I'd much rather do that. And what I want to share with you this evening is a development of a hotel in the DeForest area. And the hotel that we're looking at is a Grand State Hotel. And what I've got this evening for you to look at is an executive summary of what this will consist of. And as we look at the executive summary, there's a number of things that I want to point out. And the first thing is, is that the purpose of us appearing tonight in front of you is to provide information that will hopefully help you determine in the request that we have for getting approval within this TID District number eight. And also, we've gone through the development agreement, both the city and I, as have had an opportunity to review all the varying different aspects of the development agreement and have reached a concurrence as to an acceptance of that. You know, we started this project, we actually started well in excess of a year ago. And we've had some major challenges in an effort to try and put this project together. And as we're all relating to the fact that COVID-19 created a lot of issues for us. And we've now finally been able to work our way through that, well, it also created some financing issues for us as well. And the lodging industry is probably everyone is aware, in 2020, really ended up having difficult times just due to the fact that people were unable to travel and utilize the facilities and that sort of thing. And then coming out of COVID, we also saw an increase of construction costs. So it just seemed like every time we turned around, there was an additional issue that we had to contend with. And then May, we got a revision of our construction costs and they had gone up substantially. So, so the delays and the challenges that we've had to work through are seemingly moving behind us now. So we're feeling better about that aspect of where we're at today. The development itself, it's, I think, important for you to understand who the developers are in reference to this. And Regal Development LLC is a company that I own and operate and I'm the president of. And I've been in the development business for 45 years in the hospitality side of it. And I've developed in excess of 250 different types of hospitality properties. And when I talk about hospitality properties, what I'm really saying is I'm talking about both hotels and restaurants. And we've owned and operated 24 of those varying different facilities. And we've had a variety of different franchises that we've operated. And I was selected as developer of the year on two different occasions from two different franchises. So, you know, kind of the old comment, this is not our first rodeo, we've kind of done a number of developments through the years. And we've also done an awful lot with TIF. And so we've not new to the TIF aspects of how it works and what the nuances are of the TIF programs and that sort of thing. And our most recent project that we've completed was 116-room Grand State Hotel. And that was done in a northeast suburb of the Minneapolis metro area. And we did this in cooperation with another company, it was Market Point Inc. And George Jansen is also on the line tonight with us. And and George is the principal of Market Point Inc. And and he develops properties throughout the US as well and does an awful lot with the financial side, doing banks and that sort of thing. And then also works with the lodging industry. He's also a real estate broker, and so he's able to assist in a lot of different ways in putting these developments together for us. And and our relationship goes back a lot of years, but most recently, we've worked on the 116-room Grand State that we did up in the northeast suburb of Minneapolis metro area. And then we're currently working on four other Grand State projects in other locations. This particular property is going to be low out along Highway 19, just where the interstate, 30, 94, 90, all those interchanges. And it's out in front of the Fleet Farm area. And if you take a look at where the pointer's at, that's about the approximate area. And I've also brought up an aerial view and and Google Earth hasn't quite caught up with all the developments going out in that area. But this again gives you some sort of a feel for the approximate location as to where we're at. This area here obviously is within that TIF District number eight. And so again, this just gives you a good feel for where that's located. The site plan itself, you'll note that we're actually going to take the easterly portion of Lot 2. And we've done some preliminary engineering, civil engineering on this lot. And you'll see that with the civil engineering, we've got a retention pond here. And then we've got a holding pond that's going to end up encompassing or providing for both lots, which will end up being subdivided. So it'll be both this lot as well as the lot that the Grand State Hotel sit on. So it ends up being one that allows us to be able to have a little better utilization of all the property out there rather than for each property to have its own holding pond. So that's the process that we're going through there. And you'll see here in the lower one that I've got on screen now, that actually shows this whole lot too here with half of it being utilized for the hotel and the other half available for future development. The property that we're going to develop on this particular location is a 76-room, three-story Grand State Hotel. And it has a variety of different types of rooms available to the guest. And one is the extended stay. And the extended stays are one in which we have a two-room facility. And the two-room is one where you have a sleeping room as well as a gathering area as well as a kitchen area on it. And I've got some pictures I'll show you shortly in reference to what those rooms look like. We also have what we call the Executive Kings, which are oversized rooms that provide for a king bed. And again, nice working area and microwave refrigerator and that sort of thing. And and then all of our doubles are queens, so they're all again nicely appointed, nicely sized rooms. We also will have a meeting room that will end up accommodating 50-plus. And and that meeting room is going to end up being one that, as you can see from the pointer here, is located just off of the lobby area. So on this being the lobby area over on this side here. And then we also have a lounge area, in the lounge area as well as a breakfast area in the backside there. So it has a somewhat of a dual purpose. And then the other thing that we do is we are incorporating an outdoor patio. And I apologize if that wasn't shown on this originally. And so I've hand-drawn it in down here, but that outdoor patio will be one, it's, it's a, it's a nice patio. It'll have a fire pit in it and obviously nice seating area and that sort of thing. And it connects into the lounge area as well as the breakfast area, so people can end up going out there in the morning. And it connects into the lounge area as well as the breakfast area. So people can end up going out there in the morning and having the breakfast. And they can also sit out there in the evening, have a cocktail or whatever they should choose to do from there. And so again, it's it is well appointed from the standpoint of it adding a nice amenity to the hotel. This is, as I said, a three story property. You notice on the second floor that this is open. So the lobby area is a two story lobby area. This is a portico chair. So the guests can drive in underneath the portico chair and load and offload without ending up having, the elements can in any way interfere with them, whether it be snow or rain or whatever the case might end up being. And then obviously, the rest of the floor is all guest rooms. And then the third floor is all guest rooms as well. And I'd like to point out to you too, that the undulation on the backside of the building here, you notice that it sticks out here. And it also sticks out over here. And so it's not just a flat surface all the way across. And when I show you the elevations on it, you tend to look at it and say, oh, it's a flat surface, but it's not. So it does have nice character to it and that sort of thing. And and it ends up providing a breaking up of a longer surface. And you'll see on the third floor here, where we've got the same thing, where it sticks out in the back a little bit, as well as a couple of projections out into the front of the hotel as well. And on this, you'll see here, this is the elevation. And this is the easterly elevation, which would face towards the interstate. And on this one, you'll see that this is the entranceway here. This is the portico chair across through here. And then this is a secondary entrance on the other end. And we've been working with the village in reference to looking at the overall elevations, the ability to access the building and that sort of thing. And so there's a few things that we're still working through and that sort of thing. But again, this is getting close to where we will end up wanting to be. And this is the elevation that would face to the west. And this particular area down in here is the pool area, which ends up protruding out away from the building. And then this is the area where we'll end up having that outdoor patio. So again, it ends up having some nice features on it that'll help break that up. Now, as I mentioned, we have been, whoops, we have been working with the village. And the village has reviewed our preliminary plans. And we've gotten the village planning commissioner consultant to review it. And I've gotten some comments back from them. And we've had site plan review and how we might be able to incorporate some additional things on the site plan, like a bike rack and the ability to have oversized parking and that sort of thing on it. And then we've also reviewed the building with the fire department and the access and the availability for a hopefully never a fire to occur. But if they did, why they want to make sure we have appropriate access to all sides of the building, we've gone over that. And and we feel very comfortable with their recommendations and our abilities to provide for with what their requests are. As far as the project construction timetable, we'll start the project this fall. And it will take us about eight to nine months to complete the project. And so that will provide us with an opening in the second quarter of two thousand twenty two. As I mentioned before, the franchise is going to be a Grand State Hotel. And the franchise system is based here in the Midwest. And there are a couple of locations within the Madison area. And one is the original one, which is on the, I'm going to call it the south side of Madison. And it was the original design that Grand State had. And the original concept was to be an all extended state property. So that particular property does not end up providing with exactly the type of character and quality of product that we're going to end up building. Then the second generation was the one that's over in Mount Horeb. And again, that's one where it's kind of gone through a few more changes and that sort of thing. But that particular property was not an all extended state property. That had a combination of the two. And what we are proposing in DeForest is what I would call the third generation of the Grand State Hotels. And in that particular generation, what we've got is we've got a mixture, as I mentioned before, the extended state properties as well, extended stay rooms, as well as the king rooms, as well as the varying different double rooms. And this particular property would call, would fall in what we call the upscale limited service segment. And so within that, it's a it's a higher quality than what you're going to find in in like a lower end type of a property and that sort of thing where they they call themselves limited service. So and and differentiating in the service industry that we're in, you'll find that we've got kind of three scales. We've got the lower end, we've got the mid scale, and then we've got the upscale. So we fall into that aspect of it. The hotel will be professionally managed. We've consulted with the management company in reference to the location and as well as to our abilities to have this perform for us properly. And Blue Sky Hospitality is a management company out of the Midwest. And they've done a lot of Grand State properties along with other different types of franchises. And they're extremely experienced and knowledgeable about the Grand State franchise system as well as the lodging hospitality industry. And they got a real good grasp on how to end up marketing properties and that sort of thing. And and back when I started, and it's hard for me to imagine it was forty five years ago, but it is. And but when I started at that time, our our means of marketing was to put up a billboard that was going to end up being, you know, fifteen miles out of town in each direction on the major road. And that was our marketing program. Well, any longer, that's not effective whatsoever. And everybody utilizing smartphones and that sort of thing in the process of booking rooms and that sort of. And and so technology is extremely important to us. And and Blue Sky has a very good grasp on how to technically, or technology wise, market our properties and that sort of thing. And speaking of marketing, we've done a market analysis. And this market analysis was paid for by the city. So it's not a analysis that what I would call was influenced by us or anything of that nature. Now, the original one was done in October of twenty seventeen. So it's a little bit outdated. And then they updated in mid twenty twenty. And I would tell you that if you understand how market analysis are done, it's done off of data. And the data that they utilize is what we call Smith Travel Research. Well, Smith Travel Research ends up having to take specific data that's provided by varying different properties in the market. And as you can well appreciate, twenty twenty was not a good year for the lodging industry. So the market analysis somewhat skewed. And and I've told in a number of people, I said that, you know, you really need to be looking at twenty nineteen as being the year that you're going to compare against as to what the opportunities are for property in this market. And and I've also said that, just don't get around that twenty twenty was a bad year for the lodging industry. And and I also predicted, and it's coming true, it always makes you feel kind of good when your predictions come true. But I predicted that the first quarter of twenty one was not going to be a really good quarter. And I said, but the second quarter is going to start to pick up. And then the third quarter said, Katie bar the door because people are going to be out moving. I mean, you can't take, you know, we're all social animals. And and so you can't take and pin us up for a year and 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 not expect us to go a little bit stir crazy. And once you've opened the door, why, we're going to go. And that's exactly what we're seeing in our other properties is is we're just absolutely. July just took off with a with a gang buster, occupancy. And and to that end, I will tell you that rates are going up rapidly as well. And and that was something that I again forecast is is that you will probably end up the year of twenty twenty one with almost the same as what we saw in twenty nineteen. And that's primarily true of the outlying areas. It's not true of the downtown metro markets. Now, when you look at the overall market areas, it's skewed from the standpoint that you'll find that the metro areas, they're going to come back slower because you're not seeing the business traveler and being as robust of traveling as what the leisure traveler is. So we're seeing though that the outlying markets and and I, no offense intended to DeForest, I don't call it a metro area. I call it an outlying area. And and we're starting to see that happening in our outlying areas and our other marketplaces as well. I have a number of pictures here that I just shared with you in reference to the exterior. And these are varying different properties here. But you'll notice that the portico chair is a drive under portico chair going into the entrance area here. And both of these happen to be ones that have got pretty much the same colorations on it. And then this again ends up being another property. And this is a night view. Kind of gives you a little bit of feel for and some of that undulation that I was talking about on the exterior of the building. And this one down here, you'll see again that undulation that you see, you know, protrusion coming out of the building and the use of stone or brick and that sort of thing. And again, it's all in an effort to try and break up the exterior of the building. This is an interior shot of the lobby area. And you'll see that's got a nice gathering area there. And the lounge bar area is located off to the backside here. And over here is the front desk area. And all of them will have fireplaces. And ours will have a fireplace in it as well. And there's a little business center located off the side. This is, this is actually the property that we developed in the northeast suburb of Minneapolis. This is the fireside sitting area and that sort of thing. This is the lounge area and the breakfast area is over here. And then the front desk area is located over in here. But again, it's just to show you too, that there's varying different means by which we can go about providing for characters to the area. And we've talked with the owner of the property or the land. And and we've told them, oh, we're going to end up making it something that's going to be one that everybody is comfortable with in DeForest. And we can cater to the local flavor of the DeForest area. And that's again, one of the nice things about working with the Grand State system is they allow us to be able to do that. This is the shot of a couple of different of the bar areas or lounge areas there. You'll see there's a bar area as well as a sitting area off to the side of both of those. And this is the continental breakfast area. There's a gathering table. And then there's also the means by which people can end up servicing themselves and that sort of thing. And during COVID, we came through, obviously, a very difficult time of trying to determine how we're going to end up allowing people to provide for themselves and that sort of thing. And and we've also got some of this breakfast areas now that we're doing some of the service from a actual person rather than being a self-serve type of operation. And their property will have an indoor pool. And you can see there that it's nicely appointed from the standpoint of size and that sort of thing, as well as a hot tub area. And we have fitness centers in all of our properties as well. And there's the business center that I mentioned. And and anymore today, customers roll like to end up having something that's a little bit more of a social environment versus when we used to put them all off in the corner and into a room and that sort of thing and and so forth. And then you'll see down in the lower picture there that that's a picture of one of the meeting rooms. And our meeting room won't be quite as big as that, but it'll end up again providing for a nice space from which people can end up having a nice closed out meeting and that sort of thing. This is a shot of the top here of one of the extended stay rooms. And you'll see that the the sleeping area is off to the back area here. This is a sofa sleeper, so it can accommodate additional sleeping in that room as well. And you'll see here that this is the full kitchen area. And I've got a shot of the kitchen area down here too. So again, it does provide for a nice extended stay. The king executive rooms obviously are well appointed, nice sized rooms and that sort of thing. And here's a shot of two of the varying different king executive rooms that we've gotten a couple of the properties. And this is, the top picture is the one that we did in that hundred and sixteen room property that we just finished. And then the bottom one is a copy of a or a picture of a of a queen double. And then here's another couple of queen doubles that are in a couple of other of the different properties. So to that end, I'll yield and be happy to answer any questions that you may have in reference to the development of this property. But what I wanted primarily this evening to do is give you the opportunity to kind of get a feel for what we're going to be developing in DeForest and the quality of the product.
Thank you, John. Very nice. Questions? Bill?
Yeah, John, you brought up construction costs. May lumber was at sixteen hundred thousand feet. Said five hundred dollars a thousand foot now. Does that reflect positively for you?
Yeah, well, certainly does help us in in reference to being able to help the process of getting this property built. And and I will candidly tell you that in May, I couldn't have built a period. I just want it to happen because the lumber prices were just too exorbitant. And we got, on one of the properties we were working on, we got the bid back. And and in that particular property, the lumber bill was four hundred thousand dollars. When we originally bid it, came back at eight hundred thousand dollars. So it doubled in price. And 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 so I will tell you that it it really created some major issues. And 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 obviously caused us a lot of indigestion as to whether or not we were even going to be able to do this property. And we had heard that lumber prices were going to come down. We believed that they were going to end up coming down and they had the deed started to come back down. Still an issue of supply and still an issue of being able to get the product that we need and that sort of thing. But but it is moving in the correct direction that allows us to be able to financially be able to make this project work.
And then occupancy rates, you notice a trend of less during the week stay?
Yeah, and and I will tell you that in a property like this, we're going to see spikes on Friday and Saturday. Although you will end up having a little more evening out. And the reason you'll have some of this evening out is that we're getting more business travelers. And I don't know how to how to say this easily, but people are nervous about staying in downtown metro areas right now. They just are. And they have business in downtown metro areas. And so what's occurring is is that the outlying areas are picking up the business. So so I anticipate that what's going to happen is it's going to take some time for these guys to to feel comfortable going downtown again. And so we're going to see occupancy building through the week as well with business people that are going to end up having meetings downtown. Now, because of our location, easy access to downtown Madison, I anticipate again that we'll see a little better occupancy during the week from business travelers. But you're right, from the standpoint that hotels and this property or this area and that sort of thing are going to see spikes on the weekends and that sort of thing. And you know, your your recreation park that you have just north of us there with the ball diamonds and that sort of thing, well, I tell you, that that just lends well to this sort of a property. And 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 again, ends up giving us good occupancy on Friday and Saturday nights. So so that's, but but you're right from the standpoint that we'll see more spiking on the weekends.
I agree. Tomorrow night I'll be in Dayton, Ohio. And I'm staying as far away from downtown Dayton as I can. I don't know if anybody else has been to Dayton, but I advise you to stay out in the outskirts. I I've been an extended stay one or two times a week about eight years ago. And I agree with you. It's it's not very well designed. I like that you're proposing something more upscale than that. What do you pay your maids? Do you know what the the scale for that is?
Sure do. And we have performed at this at fifteen dollars. Will we end up having to pay fifteen dollars right off? My guess is probably not. But again, I'm looking at it and saying that I don't have control over where the government's going to go and what's going to happen. And if they do end up putting a fifteen dollar minimum wage in play, then I want to be prepared for it. And so when I do my projections, I always project from the standpoint of worst on expenses and and conservative on the income side. Then at the end of the day, hopefully, I'm not going to end up seeing any surprises. And so as we put this performer together, that's kind of how we did it. So but I've I've got it projected in there at fifteen dollars. And my my best guess today, if you were to ask me, what am I actually going to end up paying? I'm guessing that we'll probably pay somewhere in that twelve and a half to thirteen dollar range.
All right.
Thank you, Bill. We're going to let Abby had a question.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. It gives a lot of good information to us. I was just wondering about the job creation. I I believe it says. I, I believe it says, uh, you, if, if the agreement is approved tonight, that you're agreeing to eleven new full-time positions here? And if you could share a bit more about what those positions would be and, and salary approximately?
Sure, I'd be happy to do so. And, um, when we talk about, uh, the full-time, we talk about full-time equivalents. And so we are, we're looking at eleven full-time equivalents. So we will probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty-two employees on the property, okay? But the maid service, uh, they can get full-time if they want to work six days a week, but they may not end up having full-time if they don't work more than that. Uh, because the, the maid service generally comes in somewhere around eight o'clock and they're out of the hotel by three o'clock. So if you do the math, you can see that that doesn't quite give them forty hours if they work just five days. But again, I do anticipate that some of them will end up working, uh, you know, you know, six days a week or whatever the case might be. But, but that's why we talk about it being a full-time equivalent. Because we, in a property this size, will probably have six maids on at a time. Okay, so what will happen is, is that you'll have two maids per floor. You'll have a head housekeeper, you'll have a, uh, a, uh, what I'm going to call the laundry person, you'll have a maintenance person on, on staff. We'll also end up having obviously a marketing person and a general manager. And there may be an assistant manager on the property again of this size. So again, the, the mix of personnel will end up being the, the, uh, general manager obviously will end up, uh, making a, a salary as well as the, uh, marketing person will probably end up making a salary as well. And, uh, we've, we've got the salary in for the general manager perform it in at seventy thousand a year. And so that's about where that person will end up, uh, falling. So, uh, and, and the, and then the, the assistant manager will obviously be substantially less than that. Marketing person will probably be in that forty thousand dollar a year range as well, so. Uh, so again, that's, that's kind of the, the mix of employment that we've got on it and, uh, the range of salaries. And, uh, and I would envision that, uh, that there will probably be no one on staff that'll be paid less than that twelve, twelve and a half that we talked about.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm just curious if you've already done this maybe, but I would suggest if you haven't, reach out to the, the Union Training Center. That's pretty much across the street. And just understand their business model because I just feel like your location is a great asset to them and you might want to just make sure you have enough extended stays. Cause my limited understanding based on a couple of individuals I've talked to, I think they come in for a week to sort of do an adventurous ship training type thing, so.
I well appreciate the heads up on that. And, uh, one of the things that we do when we go into these markets is we do end up going out and interviewing the major businesses in the area in an effort to try and understand what their needs are and that sort of thing. And, um, and we have a marketing person that ends up doing that for us. And, uh, but we'll make sure that, uh, that we have indeed, uh, had them, those folks contacted to make sure we're able to take care of them. You know, and, and within that end, what we also do is, is that, um, we have what we call an average daily rate. And the slang in our industry is EDR. And, um, and that varies because, uh, we, you know, for, uh, companies like that, uh, we'll go in and we'll end up negotiating a rate with them. And they'll negotiate back with us and say, okay, we're going to take X number of rooms on an annualized basis. And I said, well, if you're going to take X number of rooms, then we're not going to sell them to you at rack rate. We're going to give you a discount for that. So it's what we call our base business and we build into and, uh, and into the, the varying businesses in the area and negotiating those, uh, base business rates with them.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll thank John and look forward to talking with you later.
Well, I appreciate again, the opportunity to be able to visit with you folks this evening. And, um, they certainly will be available in any time, uh, to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. All right. I think the other appearances, um, Mike and Mike and Blake will come on your agenda item. Yep. Okay. Let me note that. Then we'll move to general appearances. Again, um, we'll, we'll hear for three minutes. And the first one that I will call is Abe Degnan.
All right, um, is the mic working here or do I need to move closer yet? Okay, um, I'm here tonight, um, to address a, uh, request to the Ethics Committee for a complaint against you, President Wolfgram. I have submitted this in writing, um, and I, I have made revisions actually to it since, uh, what was submitted for last week's meeting. So this is a new copy before us tonight. So, um, my name is Abe Degnan. I'm a longtime resident of the village. And so, um, in 2020, I began to speak out about proposed developments and TIF expenditures within the village of DeForest and in my own neighborhood. I spoke on the history of the neighborhood and the history of the village board during the time I served as it relates to those developments and TIF expenditures. I had been a member of the Board of Review since about 2006 and the Board of Zoning Appeal since about 2007. Upon information and belief, I was the longest-serving and most experienced member of each of these boards of the time. President Wolfgram has the authority to renew appointments to these committees and a responsibility to the betterment of the village. In April of 2021, my positions were not renewed by President Wolfgram. I was not notified by President Wolfgram or anyone from the village staff of these changes until I received texts from others who asked me if I had left my position or asked not to be renewed. Upon information and belief, President Wolfgram was acting in a retaliatory air manner for my speaking out and was attempting to intimidate me or silence opposing viewpoints. Upon information and belief, President Wolfgram did contact the Executive Director of the Wisconsin Builders Association on or about the morning of June 25th, 2021, by calling him and leaving a voicemail in which she identified herself, uh, as, uh, calling on the behalf of the village of DeForest. That voicemail was submitted, um, to the village, uh, by email. Um, and I believe that, uh, the village clerk and others will have a copy of it. President Wolfgram did upon information and belief claim during that voicemail that she had received calls from other builders asking if the WBA had changed its policies about workforce housing, multifamily development, et cetera. Uh, Mr. Boyce returned that call at which time she identified me as having appeared before the village board. And Mr. Boyce asked President Wolfgram whether I had ever represented myself at the public meetings as president of the WBA, to which President Wolfgram replied, no. After his conversation with President Wolfgram, Mr. Boyce directed, uh, contacted me to inform me of the contents of his discussion. And we mutually agreed to do nothing at a time, at that time and wait. Upon information and belief, President Wolfgram was attempting to intimidate me or silence my opposing viewpoints by putting pressure on Mr. Boyce or expecting Mr. Boyce to put pressure on me. On July 2nd, 2021, at 12:19 PM, I received an email from Steve Wolfgram, the husband of President Wolfgram. Also included in that email were members of the Boards of the WBA and Madison Area Builders Association by email, about fifteen different people. That list has all been provided. Mr. Wolfgram attached to that email a letter which resembled a press release style memo with a subject line which falsely accused me in my capacity as president of the WBA of publicly opposing the use of TIFs for housing developments, greenfield developments and TIFs and calls TIFs corporate welfare. Now, at no time have I ever, have I ever appeared before the village board in my capacity as the president of the WBA to oppose TIFs in DeForest. Each and every appearance before the village board, I have appeared solely as a private citizen and resident of the village of DeForest. My public appearance forms, were they to be produced by the village, will clearly show that I appear as a private citizen. Upon information and belief, the use of Mr. Wolfgram's email address at his firm was designed along with the press release style format of the memo to portray the credibility of the assertions included in his message, attempting to silence me and intimidate my colleagues. At page one, paragraph three of the letter, Mr. Wolfgram did once again falsely accuse me of opposing TIFs in my capacity as president. Not only did he make this accusation, he even emphasized it by underlining and drawing particular attention to the accusation. I will skip a couple of paragraphs here, um, that, uh, that, uh, can all be, uh, reviewed by the staff as I have been, um, paraphrasing my, this stuff. But, uh, it is noteworthy here, uh, under point eighteen, which all of you have copies of this point eighteen, that, uh, Mr. Wolfgram did specifically identify himself as the husband of the village president in DeForest. Uh, in that, and I'll continue to move for the sake of time here. It is noteworthy that I am not the only resident opposed to the, these proposed developments that I was speaking of. Now, point number twenty-one, upon information and belief, President Wolfgram and/or her husband Steve Wolfgram were attempting to intimidate and silence me and expecting those to whom he emailed the memo to put pressure on me. By intentionally misleading those who would read the memo, this memo intermingles my professional and business interests with my personal testimony, even though President Wolfgram was already informed by Mr. Boyce and my public appearance forms that I appear as an individual resident of the village.
Thank you, Abe.
I have more to speak about.
We, we've had the time, we all have it and we can refer it to the Ethics Committee.
Yes, I would like to wrap it up to my conclusion.
Point of order. I do believe that the chair gave three minutes and we need to make sure that we're staying equitable to people who come and speak. We have community members that come and I want everyone to know that when you're given a lot of time, that we all respect that time. I know that my comments aren't, you know, received by everyone the same, but we really need to keep point of order in our meetings and have that due diligence.
I would say also that he needs to have a moment to wrap up.
The formal side did say three to five minutes.
We have a point of order. Colleen?
Who is running this meeting?
I am.
Thank you. Three minutes.
We, we appreciate.
Does that mean that nobody gets a chance to ask him a question?
We haven't been questioning our appearances.
So you're denying the trustees their right to question the public again?
Yes.
Good to know. I guess this is going to be a banana republic then.
Thank you, Abe. All right, we'll move on. Jim?
Sort of question the point of order because isn't it pretty much in Robert's rules of order that the trustees or the boards get to ask questions of the public? Or is that not necessarily in?
Robert says and address public participation in, uh, committee meetings or commission meetings.
Do I have the right as a, uh, resident of this village to address my concerns?
You, you have the right to address your concerns. You've brought them to us. We thanked you for them. Will we affirm to the Ethics Committee and it's a private matter now? That's where we are. Al?
I'm not sure. You asked me a question?
I mean, I, I think we're good to, to move on in the agenda or not?
As things stand, I think you've got, uh, if there are other appearances, they would come next.
Yep.
Am I able to exercise my First Amendment right to the freedom of speech to address my government?
I think you just have. Abe, you appeared. We're not going to sit here and argue. We're going to move on in the meeting.
I wish to, um, note for the record, uh, that I do not feel that I have had, um, the amount of time necessary to address the concerns that I have. And I have concerns about my freedom of speech, my first right and my First Amendment right to address my government.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, um, seven point one, discussion and potential action regarding policy interpretation of Parkland dedication or payment in lieu of Parkland dedication for Bear Tree Farms, um, concept. We have, um, um, staff and then we'll have Mike and, um, and the other crew come forward and do it from their side now or?
Were all appearances done or is this part of those?
The only appearances I have other than related to the projects.
I thought we had Brian Goodman.
I don't have anything for him.
Yeah, I did. I did submit it pretty, pretty late just because I wasn't expecting to be staying at work. So I was expecting to do that while there.
All right, before we move on, Brian, do you want to take three minutes?
Uh, yes, please. Um, just let me know when I can, when I can start.
Please go ahead.
Okay, fourteen oh nine is what I got. Yep, introduction, Brian Goodman, uh, seven eight zero four Blue Stim Trail here strictly as a civilian of DeForest with no professional affiliation whatsoever. I just want to thank whoever posted the special, uh, village meeting on YouTube basically served as a, as a debrief tool for myself. Uh, and I, I went back and I looked at it and I just kind of wanted to address some of the comments made by the trustees at the, at the end of that meeting. Uh, I'll start off with, uh, with Jim. Uh, I, I respect your comments and I, I think you have a track record of looking at the data presented uh, and making judgments based on that data. I think your yes vote to pin seekers, uh, was incorrect, obviously. But I respect your comments on why and how you work towards making the best out of every project, uh, through planning and zoning. I, I just urge that you use your position in planning and zoning to, to handcuff pin seekers going forward and minimize the concerns that hundreds of people, uh, brought to your desk. Next, I'll, I'll talk about Colleen. I recommend that you go back and watch those videos of yourself during, uh, all these meetings. You say that it wasn't all about you, uh, but I'd like you to look at your body language. You know, you slouch in your chair, you make hand motions, you roll your eyes and you've been noted as dozing off. And, and I ask, how do we trust you have us in mind when we can't really trust that you'll stay awake during these presentations?
Brian, do you have a, you have a point about an item on the agenda or?
Point of order, this is his time.
Yeah, I mean, I could talk for three minutes about the Milwaukee Bucks playoff stats. Is what I, is, you know, I have three minutes. Even if this three minutes is inconvenient for you, the pin seeker's approval is going to be inconvenient for the rest of my time in DeForest. So at least inform me three minutes to talk about a debrief and at least give you honest feedback for how you all have treated us.
I'll continue. Brian, I've never fallen asleep during a village board meeting.
Okay. Uh, I'll start my time back up.
No, you won't. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're not going to criticize people.
He was interrupted. He needs to have his time.
Becca, thank you.
Point of order.
You have to rule on the point of order.
Yeah, we're, we're continuing. Finish your, your, your statement.
Okay. Uh, next, and again, this is not mean spirited. This is me trying to give you all as our trustees feedback, direct feedback. Because when you speak, we're not allowed to, to open a dialogue and that's what I'm trying to do here. This is not me being mean spirited or pointed or, or put anybody down. This is me giving you the feedback of the people. So I'll continue, um, and I only have just a little bit left to Shidra. I don't have much to say. Um, I think that you had the chance to do something very special and your, your, your speech and your talk at the end was very heartfelt. I, I've had a couple of quotes that I wrote down. I had a couple quotes that I wrote down. You said, my heart aches for our children watching now and how we are acting, and I and I disagree. I think that our children should be watching how we fight for our own quality of life. They need to see and understand the actions that we've been taking so that we're heard, and it doesn't happen again. You also said that we have sparked, we've been sparking rage, discourage, and dissension. And there's no question to that, you know, rage that people bought into something and are getting something different, discouraged that their elected leaders don't listen to them, and they say they do, dissension when money means more to the board than the people of DeForest do. And then the last thing I'll say is that you quoted to my staff, my heart aches with how you have been beaten for doing a job we charged you to do. They do what we're what they're directed to do. And my question is, did anyone think of charging someone on your staff to find a different location or to revisit the other Ted sites to possibly strike up a deal with Don Tierney? So literally, everybody wins. Just because that venue is good for DeForest doesn't mean that we need to jump the gun and put a good venue in a terrible location. And with that?
Thank you, Brian.
With that, I'll just say for all of you that voted no to pin seekers, or for anybody that voted yes, had you voted no, how many people in DeForest's lives would have been changed? And then you counter that with your yes vote of pin seekers, how many people's lives are going to be fundamentally changed? And by my count, that is zero to several hundred. And I hope that you all truly are still thinking about this because it's not over. People are still very upset about it, and I just wanted to?
Thank you, time.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry Tierney, I understand you want to speak again. Thank you. It's okay.
Jerry Tierney, six seven eight nine Wagner's, the new Trailson Prairie. I just wanted to address an issue with the Savannah Brooks replad. It's all kind of tangled together. We're going to talk about it before. It's to do with an MRO bond that was issued probably two or three years ago or something like that. The MRO bond was issued, and Savannah Brooks is tied to. And within that, we've stuck a lot of money in it, and I'm not complaining about that. But it isn't like we just had the village fully to fund all of the commercial property. And this MRO bond was issued to build a portion of, I believe, Savannah Drive. And the agreement was you build this, and this MRO bond is sixty thousand a year for five years that partially helped repay for for the construction. And our thought is we did what we said we would do. There's been some talk of us maybe forfeiting all of that or some of it. And for several reasons, I probably don't have enough time to explain it all, but for several reasons, I respectfully disagree with that opinion. An easy figuring one is if we're adding around number of fifty lots, that would be an additional six thousand dollars per lot cost that we weren't expecting. We were expecting, hey, we're here now, let's try to get some tax base and and things going. That whole idea of giving that money back for something that, you know, we can't tear the road apart and and undo all the construction that was done. It's not like it's money in our pocket. It's been spent, and to me, it's kind of a sunk cost, and we can either move on that direction or not. And I just wanted to to say that. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thanks.
Thank you. And we will be discussing this extensively in in closed sessions. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, moving forward. Now we are going to do the discussion and potential action regarding policy interpretation of parkland dedication and payment in lieu of parkland dedication for Bear Tree Farms concept. So.
I can just give you a brief summary of what the issue is about. Bear Tree Farms West is part of a development that was owned by or is owned by one of several entities that were were kind of owners of what is the TID seven property that's now owned by Hooper. A long time ago, there was discussion about a general concept plan for the entire development, which actually included a subdivision in Windsor. But it was the same owners and the village and what is now the village of Windsor kind of worked together on planning that entire area. As part of the development of, and I'll just call it the Hooper property to distinguish it from Bear Tree Farms West, there were a number of stormwater areas, wetland areas, and other undevelopable areas that were dedicated to the village for stormwater management purposes. What the developer is suggesting now is that because that those stormwater basin areas and the wetlands that were dedicated exceed the amount of parkland that would have been required for the amount of residential development in that area, that a credit should be given or has to be given to Bear Tree Farms West for those areas. You were provided with a copy of Attorney Lawton's, a letter where he lays out his arguments as to why that's the case. You also have my response to that letter, which which basically highlights the distinction between parkland and stormwater detention basis. The main difference is the village takes ownership of stormwater areas basically as a benefit to the developer. Stormwater areas have to be maintained, and to assure that they're maintained, the village takes control over them once it once they're completed. Parkland, on the other hand, is a required dedication for the benefit of the village residents. That residential development generates the need for parkland that people can use and enjoy. People don't use and enjoy stormwater management areas. So our position is at the staff level that, number one, there's never been any approval of any acceptance of those lands as parkland. They were dedicated as stormwater areas, and that's what they are. And the ordinance has not been met with regard to the parkland dedication that might be required from Bear Tree Farms West, depending on how it's ultimately developed.
Want to add to that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Shall we hear from Mike?
Sure, if Mike wants.
Yeah.
Mike? Mike and company? We see Mike frequently because he represents many of our developers, so he needs a three-brimmed hat.
Yeah, I think it would be good if Mike Hawkins was here with me because I know the plan commission has dealt with this property in terms of the overall plan. I don't know if the board has heard a lot about the overall plan for the property, kind of put it all in the context, and I know you're going to have a discussion on this. Mike, let me just open with a couple of comments. The developer, Doid Ziegler, has laid out his letter, I think you have a copy of that, I saw it in the packet, the different components that will be in this project. And there are is there is a wide variety of different housing options that are being proposed for this area. And again, as I guess to repeat myself earlier, I know you're interested in more housing and more housing options of different varieties of things. And this particular project includes quite a variety of those, and I'll have my comment on those in a second. We're estimating about a forty million dollar valuation for the housing components of this of this area. So it's a significant benefit to the village of both fiscally and from a social point of view, providing the the housing. We do have this dispute that has arisen about the park fees, not the, I'll try to carefully distinguish some, there's the fee in lieu that you pay when you don't dedicate enough parkland if either the village doesn't want the parkland you've offered, or you don't choose to dedicate any, there's that fee. And then there's the park improvement fee, which is the fee the village uses to build things in the parks, and that each housing unit pays. We have no problem and no objection or no dispute about paying the park improvement fee, which is the fee that's used to build out parks, put equipment, and so on. The only issue here is dealing with the fee in lieu. The developer and as Al pointed out, there are a couple of different entities, but they've all been under common ownership, and now there's one owner of these entities, feels that they've dedicated sufficient land in the past for parks, and that there is, the village doesn't seem to be interested probably in more parkland there. And we could talk about the ball fields in a second. So we feel we've satisfied the practical requirements of that. And then if you look at the documents, and I outlined the key document, which is the 2011 restrictions that refers to park and open space and treats that as parkland, in the view of the developer, he feels that he has satisfied his requirements. Now, all of you, of course, have the opportunity to go out to the area and look at the parks and and draw your own conclusion as to whether the parks are sufficient in that area. We feel they they are, and of course, you will get the park improvement fee that we talked about, which I don't know, Mike, what do we estimate for the number of, if there's two hundred and sixty-eight ultimate housing units, we're talking a significant amount of money the village would get from that. If there's no development, of course, which is one of the options, if this, you know, doesn't doesn't go anywhere, of course, then we've got farmland, and we have no park fees, we have no parks, and we have no housing, and you just get, you know, farm taxes, of course. So that's the other option, and that's clearly a lose-lose for everybody, the developer, the village, the community, and so on. So I don't think any of us really want to see that happen. And our suggestion is to either, you could either agree with our interpretation, which is outlined in my letter, or you have a couple other legal avenues, as I see it. And let me grab the sections of the ordinances. Under section thirteen oh nine, you can grant a you can grant waivers from provisions of the subdivision ordinance if you find that it's in the public interest to do that and doesn't conflict with the intent of the ordinances. And then under section thirteen fifty-one of the subdivision ordinance, you can grant waivers to the fee requirements if you conclude that the granting of the waiver will promote affordable housing and or is otherwise unreasonable or inequitable due to the unique circumstances of the particular property at issue. So you can either agree with our interpretation, or you can address it as a waiver under either of those sections, feeling that it's inequitable to require a further payment of fees in lieu. But you'd be happy to see the housing, and you'd be happy to see the park improvement fees paid and happy to get the tax base that's involved. So I think probably at this point, that kind of poses the issue for all of you. And I know, Mike, if you want to comment on what would be in the acreage that we're talking about here, so they all have an idea.
Yeah. Thank you again for the opportunity to address this this project. We talked about the last meeting about getting together with staff and other people and coming up with a plan for the single family, the four unit. The duplexes are highly successful, the ones that have been sold already in the village of Windsor, and we're looking to do something somewhere north of the church. I think the the point I want to make as it relates to the waiver and affordability here is, you know, the senior product that is being proposed, the hundred unit product is looking for tax credits and trying to do things down the affordability route. The developer himself is working with Josh Lamp to develop the single family portion of this, and I guess the best way for me to try to tie the affordability to it is he's trying to sell these, putting the streets in and selling the land so that each one of these houses has a sixty-five thousand dollar base on it rather than a ninety or a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar base, or whatever you would see in a normal subdivision setting. And part of his ability to do that would be, you know, whether it's a public street with reduced or street width and or guidelines through a PUD document, or if it's a private street network as proposed, both are set up to go private or public if there's a reduced right-of-way width. So I think trying to get that single family product is 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 really important, and, you know, the mix of single family and four unit. Mr. Simpson made comment about moving some of that around potentially to make a better site plan. That's all stuff we're willing to work with and or the change in unit mix. I just want to, we're just trying to provide, you know, the workforce better options, and, you know, whether it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollar four unit lot instead of a hundred and sixty thousand dollar, you know, market rate one, we're still trying to keep those price points down so that translates to the people that buy them or rent them. So that's the main point I wanted to make, the follow-up on Mike's request, so.
The other thing we should talk about, Mike, is the basement. Oh, excuse me. The other thing we wanted to talk about is the baseball component of this. And I know there is a lot of discussion. I, by the way, it's all nice to see all of you again because I've been watching these online things with these meetings. And I know you had a discussion one night when I was watching about, I think Judd was involved in it, well, what do we do with this baseball component? As I understand it, the developer is willing to go ahead with that as a nonprofit five oh one C three type of thing so that you don't have to decide, you know, can we do it? Don't we, do we want to do it? Can we find the funding, et cetera, et cetera? We can proceed, and I'm fortunate to have Mike Hawkins with me, who's, in addition to being a great civil engineer, is also a baseball aficionado and is involved in some nonprofit baseball activities. So we apparently, as I understand it, Mike, and you can confirm that, have the ability to take this donation of the land, which could go to a five one C three, along with the funds that would be needed for some of the improvements, and work with a five oh one C three group that maybe Mike is associated with, and he can comment on that, and turn this baseball complex into a live baseball complex so that, you know, maybe down the road or something, there'd be some relationship with the with the village. But we could get this launched, as I understand, Mike, without having to have you guys have to decide, you know, what are we doing at Fireman's Park and all that? Because I saw your discussion, and I understand all the budget and other issues. So, Mike, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, I'll just comment that I did make a call to some people that I grew up with in Sun Prairie that are residents of in the DeForest Windsor area, and they're associated with Windsor and DeForest Little League, and made them alert to that possibility of a field, and they got all excited about it, and they were going to run and talk to their board. And I I've been laying low, following up with them, but I do know our Little League Board in Sun Prairie would be more than happy to take that on, and we have, you know, the bank of Sun Prairie has been our bank for a lot of years, and our track record with being able to fund and take care of parks everywhere in the Sun Prairie, whether it's school property or city parks is documented. So we're just, I just want to point out that there's a sound avenue to go the gifting five oh one C.
Right, yeah, so we can launch that, and we've still got to resolve this park fee issue, but the other baseball diamond part of it, I think we can manage. So I want to let you know that.
Blake?
Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to address that we are made a tremendous attempt to address the affordable housing issue with this last piece of this project. I don't, the word low income, I know, certain connotations with it, but what we're trying to do is make this financially accessible to people. At today's rates, today's prices on housing, I was listening to the Grand State developer talking about their, the people that do their cleaning, making fifteen dollars an hour, and owning a home is a far dream that may never be accomplished for somebody like that. And that's exactly what this housing is for. At sixty-five thousand dollars a lot, this is the only way. And Mr. Tierney can speak to the same thing, although, you know, there are people that do live in four hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses. These will be brand-new houses focused at or near the in the two hundred thousand dollar mark, brand-new. And you just won't see that. I'm not sure we'll ever see it again. MWF, who's a developer of the senior housing, once again, attempting to provide a product that's affordable, that's accessible for seniors, and then the four units, which we've developed in and near DeForest. Not every, you, if you're reading the current multifamily market, large developers, that's where they're going. You know, seventy-six, a hundred, two hundred, that's the only way they can make the units even market rate affordable. You know, 76, 100, 200, that's the only way they can make the units even market rate affordable. At the prices we're doing these four units, we're hoping that if they are three-bedroom, they would be for families. They would have a garage. They would offer what would normally be a normal home. But maybe they don't have the down payment, but they would still have the benefit of the rest of the development, which is we have a church, we have a daycare, we hope to have a little league field. We're still planning on dedicating a corner up there for a convenient store. And then we have daycare. It's turned into an excellent neighborhood and this would, and those homes are the proverbial four, five, $600,000 homes. But these would be another segment of, of the population that needs and deserves to either own a home or rent something similar to a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Sure is a complicated issue. It's been going on for a long time. I'm sure Trustee Simpson has been, spent many hours on this at P&amp;Z. My thing is parkland, our definition needs to be defined differently. I've stood out on the detention pond down over. I see a tremendous recreational potential for that area. I'm, I'm not interested in going on the fires, Fireman's Park. The splash pad doesn't do anything for me. I, I walked out there and saw the potential of another trail system where you could bring your fishing pole, fish in that pond, walk along the top. It's just another recreational aspect of parkland that I think we need to consider. Thanks.
Okay. Other questions? One question I had, we had talked, I think at one time about what people call a top park. And you're still, are you considering that?
Yeah, they definitely will. Right now, there's money in the budget to put the playground equipment next to the field, which would serve also the neighborhood here, although it'd be a private entity or it'd be part of that development. The public would not be. I'm sure we can, for you, for music.
We can assure them that that would, that would be included in the thing by some agreement or something. So, you know, it'll be there.
And I had one, am I allowed to speak after these questions? Or I don't know.
Do you have something to add?
I don't know if you're familiar where City of Madison's going. To your point, they are letting most of their parks are wanting to be natural, where people enjoy the wildlife, that partly due to the cost and sheer maintenance. But it's not uncommon that stormwater management areas are becoming part of park systems. And it's a great way to do that, particularly in the Sun Prairie industrial park. They have great fishing in that stormwater park. So your comment, Bill, is not unfounded with where other parties are going with the kind, with the true definition of a park is anymore. There are active parks and there are passive parks.
Thank you. So as we, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Abby. Thank you.
That's okay. Um, yeah, I, the last time you were, you appeared before us, it was getting kind of late and I was, to be honest, a bit tired. I really appreciate your presentation and I definitely have a lot of interest in affordability with housing in the village because we definitely have unmet need with people, well, just needing, need more housing and more housing options. But also there are some people that, because they already work here or already live here, need some more affordable options. And also, you know, or they might have preference for, for changing their current housing option. So I really appreciate that. Would you be able to talk a bit more about how you're achieving that affordability? And can you remind me, like, just kind of the general layout that you shared last time? Or I'd appreciate that.
From a cost standpoint, the single-family housing, Josh is looking to be able to complete those and have them, without the basements finished, isn't that, he said at that 300,000 mark. So new house, I think he was talking 1,200, 1,300 square foot housing. That lots themselves are similar to like a 55-foot wide lot, which a 45-foot wide footprint. So that's, any house that can fit within that footprint would be what would be proposing or what Josh would be working with. The rents, rents and/or condo four-unit price, I'd have to rely on Blake here to speak to that, but.
Yeah, those rents have been, I think initially we started the rents at the four units. I would say they started at 995. I think we were, Michelle, when I met with you, I think we said we were trying to keep them around 1,200. Yeah. And that is for a three-bedroom. You're seeing rents, similar product in Madison, even product that I own personally at 2,000 or 2,200 for a three-bedroom. So you're talking almost a thousand dollar difference a month.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Abby?
Yeah, if, if I could, well, if I could paraphrase back and you could tell me if I'm understanding it right, with the, the single-family homes, they're allowed to, you're able to make them a bit cheaper around the $300,000 mark because the basements are unfinished and the lots are smaller than typical. Is that a correct summary?
I, I think the, the base price of, of the lot being in the $65,000 range with what's being proposed right now with the improvements as they're drawn, separates the starting point, number one, from what somebody would have to buy a lot for in a regular subdivision out there right now. Finding a $65,000 lot is pretty tough to do. So I think that's the starting point. And then in conjunction with trying to keep an house and getting a new house for 300,000 is that Josh was indicating that the basement would not be finished off, but people certainly could finish the basement off and be in the low 300s. It's just the option to do that would be on whoever was purchasing the house.
I think the way to, I, I try to help phrase this, for every $100,000 borrowed by an individual, it translates to about a $500 payment, well, probably closer to 400 with today's rates. So by saving 35 to $55,000 on the lot and then by the same token, saving a similar amount, you know, on the house or the style of the home, you know, you're saving someone at or about $400 to $500 a month. And I know, you know, you always hear people, it makes a huge difference in people's personal budget when housing, in particular if they can own their own home. When, you know, we talk about rents now for a three-bedroom approaching $2,000 a month, you know, you never can save probably ever enough money to own a home. So $500 a month is a substantial way for people to get in. And if they're unable to get into homeownership, it's very difficult for them to build personal wealth. And it is really the way that most people have built wealth throughout their life and generational wealth. So it is important, you know, saving $400 to $500 a month.
Thank you. So getting back to our, our discussion and figuring out the parkland issue, I almost feel like I need a whiteboard that shows, you know, what one side said and what the other side said. But I could use some help, Alan, defining exactly what question we're assessing.
Well, I think there were two questions originally posed. The discussion from the developer tonight was, was pretty much limited to whether the board is willing to grant a waiver of the parkland dedication requirements for the development that they're talking about. And I guess that would have to be broken down into how much of the parkland dedication requirement would be waived? Would it be waived for all residential development in that entire subdivision? Would it only be the low-income housing portion of it? And how is the village going to be assured that if you do grant that waiver, that the housing will in fact be affordable housing that you're giving the waiver for? That's essentially a policy question for the board. It's not one that I have any expertise in. So if you want to give that waiver, you can. But I think it would help if you, if, to make sure that everybody understands how park dedications work and how they're determined. The village starts with a needs assessment where you determine with professionals that are involved in doing that, how much parkland you need per person. Basically, when new development comes into town, that causes the, the need for more park space for those people to go utilize for recreational purposes. So a standard is set as to what is the village's standard for how much parkland you need per person that is coming into town, the new people that come into town, meaning the new houses that are built and pay a fee toward acquiring that parkland or they, they give land. All of that means that if you do grant a waiver to parkland for a particular development, there's one of two options that you have at that point. One is you lower your standard so that you decide, well, we'll just have less parkland for the population that we have. Or two, use general tax dollars to buy land to make up for what you gave, that you waived for, for a developer. Again, I'm not advocating a policy on that. That's up to you. But I just want you to understand that those are the options that you're, you're left with when you grant a waiver. The other concern with granting a waiver is unless you have a specific and good reason for it, you're going to be hearing the same requests from other developers who don't want to pay park fees either. So if you're comfortable that granting a waiver because the housing units will be at a specifically low price point that it makes you feel it's worth it, I think you want to be specific in your reasons for why you would grant the waiver.
Can I comment on that a bit? We always have to remember this, and I think Jim would remember this. This property was, it was, wasn't certain this would even be in DeForest. At one time it was in the famous annexation thing, would this be in Windsor, would this be in DeForest? So this has always been an odd area to be, I think it's safe to say, as opposed to the portions that are in DeForest for theirself. I think the question is, do you feel you have adequate parkland in totality in the area? I understand Al's point about, you know, gee, do you have to go out and buy land? I don't think there's any need to serve this area by acquiring other land between the land that Windsor has in parks and the land that DeForest has in parks in the area. I think the area is adequately served. Plus, we're talking about this donation of the, the ball diamonds. So I think there's sufficient justification to say, ah, we're not putting on the taxpayers any kind of a burden here at all. As far as the scope of the waiver, I think the position of the developer and owner is that all the fees should be waived on this particular area, not just particular parcels of the, I guess I'm counting, what do we got, about four or five different varieties of housing in the area rather than picking and choosing and getting into a really complicated thing, trying to regulate rents or prices. The idea, I think, from us would be just waive it on this area because it's an unusual historical area. And there's plenty of parkland in that area east of 51. So that, those are my comments. So they would add to what Al said.
Thank you. And Al?
I don't know if my comment was misunderstood, but park dedications are not for a specific development. In other words, just because you collect the fee from that development, doesn't mean the park goes in that development. You put houses up anywhere in the village, those people have the right and the ability to use every park in the, in the village. The problem you, you have is if you don't have a park in that area, they're going to go to some other park in a different area. If you do have a park in that area, other people might come from different areas to use that park. It's a, it's a basically a zero-sum game that you have a need for a certain amount of parkland. You need, you have a, a method to collect that amount of parkland village-wide basis.
They'll get the park improvement fees and those can be spent anywhere, right? So.
Okay. So questions from, people know where we are?
Yes, I have a comment, but I think I, I'll ask, looking at Alan and Mike to clarify my memory. So I remember a development that didn't happen. That was Country View where the acre property. And my memory of that subdivision is they were donating land, I'll say, for a rather large community park. And my memory of that, that the park impact fees were actually waived for those lots because of the amount of land being dedicated. Do you remember if that was in fact the case?
You say park impact fees. Are you talking about park land fees or park improvement fees?
Both. I believe both were waived because of the dedication.
I know they were dedicating enough land for the number of residential units they were proposing. I don't recall anything about waiving the improvement fees. Maybe Steve or something else does.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, John. I just remember there were, there were a lot of different impact fees on that and that, you know, was a problem in ever launching the project. I know as a totality, it was a, it was a, it was a burden, so.
I guess my memory is that the park impact fees were also waived.
Yeah. We'd have to go back and research the resolutions and things, I think.
I believe there was agreement that they would do land work, earth moving and things like that to get the fields in a level so they could be utilized. So that actually is park improvement. So they were going to, in lieu of that, they're going to do site work.
And that would be consistent with what we normally do when parks are developed by the developer. They do get a credit against the park improvement fees.
My other memory of that time is there was a lot of development going on or just sort of starting up. There is not only the Country View, but there was Lain Erickson's and Conservancy Place was, had been in place already. And Bear Tree, to me, was pretty much starting at the same time as Acre Parkway when really a lot of these impact fees, to me, were created to, so you offset the impacts to the taxes on the residents. So I don't see Bear Tree as too different than, say, what Country View was just because it was created at about the same time, so.
Country View didn't happen.
Yes, that's a very big difference.
You gotta evaluate, was that, you know, part of why it didn't happen? So it's owned by different people now. So, you know, it's hard to reconstruct the history.
And I forget the person sitting in the back, the Savannah Brooks is all sort of started about that same time too. So I mean, we got a lot of good development coming. So I hope that continues.
Other questions? If, if, if we were to assess how much parkland there is now dedicated from our perspective and how much from your perspective, do we know? At someplace I saw 32 or 33 acres on the tab. I think you're right, Bill. So, so what I'm trying to understand is part of the differential is that some of that land is, the staff are considered is stormwater land? And is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
There is.
Go back to the 2011 agreement. Now you get into legal issues about, you know, how you interpret the prior agreements. Is park and open space include stormwater lands?
For purposes of land use, that's the disagreement. The document that's being referenced is a document that limits the land use of different persons. The impact fee ordinance is entirely separate from that.
Okay.
And there was, there was one park that was dedicated in Bear Tree Farms, which is the, I think it was the 30 acres or so. That we agree was properly credited as parkland. It was dedicated for park purposes. None of the other land is dedicated for park purposes, which means it's not usable for park purposes. And could, land that's dedicated can only be used for the purposes for which it's dedicated.
I guess, before my first question, where is that park that we're all in agreement on? I guess before my first question, where is that park that we're all in agreement on?
It's in what is the residential area on the north side of the Hooper property. Right there, where the cursor is.
So then my question to follow on a different piece of property that I I call Bear Tree South. There is the large sort of wood on that, so wetland also. Is that being counted by either side?
Everything is being counted by their side. Only the thirty acre parcel is being counted by the staff.
Want to click on that? How big is that?
Six acre?
Three.
Chad?
Fox Hills, I don't know, can you click on that? Does it show the value? It doesn't have it. That that Fox Hills Park, I think, is maybe three, two to three acres.
Yes, three point two, I think.
Three point one nine, three point two, I think is what you're talking about.
The the wooded area, Jim, that you're referencing is was dedicated as stormwater management. And that's where and so are some of the other large ones where the basins are, and that's the passive versus non-passive park discussion, I guess. So I had, I guess, I'd also like to, I guess, if I can ask Al a question. The the comments about the twenty eleven, twenty eleven document that was recorded to guide development and the wording that's in that. Is the densities associated in that document flexible then, too? Or, I mean, they seem to be pretty set as we come through with submittals and being held to densities on the property. And I was just wondering how the park language versus the densities are different. I don't know if you want me to answer that.
I couldn't hear the question, to be honest.
Oh, I'm sorry. There there's densities within that same twenty eleven restriction that, as we've brought proposals forward. That Mark Roffers reviews have commented on fifty-two single family, two hundred and sixty-eight units. And so there's there's a guide or guidelines that are being established out of that restriction as it relates to density. And that's where we felt the document is more than just a planning document. It's a it's a guide that has some specifics to it, and the language we felt was stronger when it says stormwater is part of the parks. And that's, I think, where a lot of the disagreement comes into play.
Yeah, I I didn't say it was just a planning document. What I what I said was it was a land use restriction. So the density restrictions do apply. That's what the purpose of that that document was for, to say what land could be used for what purposes and at what densities. It had nothing to do with parkland dedication, though.
Rebecca?
So the where Hooper, could you point where Hooper is real quick? Is that that? Okay, so right there is Hooper and then over to the right, is that where those storm ponds are? Stormwater ponds are, because now that that I'm trying to make make a question here, that cannot be considered as parkland? Even though it's virtually set up like parkland?
I guess I don't know what virtually set up.
I mean, when you go out there, when you go out there, I mean, it looks like a park, even though there's stormwater ponds. And
It's it's dedicated for stormwater management purposes, which means you can use it for stormwater management. You can't put all fields in there. You can't put playground equipment or any of that kind of stuff.
Can't put a trail?
Maybe a trail.
Trails in the the purposes for those outlines.
Some of them do list trails as a permitted use, yes. I don't know about that one.
That answer your question?
Yeah, because for the most part, yeah, I think, because when, yeah, if you ever go out there. I mean, you've got this beautiful area with these stormwater ponds. And I guess it's the biggest one, it's almost like it's naturally laid out in such a way that you could have this phenomenal right at the top of the of the thing around the the ponds. A trail that goes around there and then like paths that go off of there to hook into other trails. And I mean, no, you couldn't build other stuff on there, but I'm I could see that as being very utilized by the people in that manner.
Is that on private land?
Think there is future plans for a trail through this corridor right here that it would connect to Windsor at some point. We've talked about that in the past.
Those nice flat areas that you're referring to are because Greg and his and Jed's people need maintenance opportunities to get to the ponds. And so those big flat spots are so they get flipping up and around there, but they could also be walking paths and other things.
So Jim?
During the planning and zoning review of the grading plan of Hooper and other things, we made sure that there was the opportunity to at least mow a path that connect Revere Trails down to Peterson Crossing.
Okay. All right, where are we, guys? We've we're wandering around on this. We Steve?
There's any need to make a decision tonight.
Okay.
This is just to get information out. We knew it had to be addressed at some point in time, and I think you have both sides information out there. And I think you're coming with another concept, you're working things out, and I think we can get a staff.
I think I think there'll be a the first formal application for rezoning is coming through when is that? That that would be the thing that kind of triggers the decision making on this. What's the schedule on that, Mike?
Next Tuesday is the P and Z meeting for the duplexes that are proposed in the development.
So while you you label this conceptual tonight, I understand technically that's true. There will be a actual zoning matter coming up that's tied to this.
I think we need to get staff to give us a non-lawyer version of all of these documents so that we're able to really ascertain and make a decision. Steve?
Yeah, I suggest a closure item at the next meeting so that we can talk more.
Okay. Is that good with people? Jim?
I just want people, when you conceptualize this, there's been some talk about the stormwater. And if we want to give it, say, full park status or maybe a prorated status. But I think there's other things to also consider where there is like the the pond that you sort of see there. That's in the woods. There's also wetlands, and there's also flood plain possibly there. I'm not positive about flood plain. I think that's other conversations that I've been in where we didn't want to include flood plain lands as parklands. So again, I think there's different things that if we go to a policymaking procedure of what we include as parklands. We should not only think about stormwater but flood plain and wetlands. And if we agree that a passive recreation is at some sort of level or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? Otherwise, I'm going to ask the accountant to do a spreadsheet for us that it's. All right, thanks. Thank you. Gentlemen, we will, we will take it up and we we appreciate your sharing the information with us.
See you in a couple of weeks, I guess.
You you will. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but we need some time to agitate.
I get bitter at this microphone, too, by then.
Okay. Well, I appreciate people's patience. This is a topic we've been trying to get to for a while, so. Eight point one is discussion regarding the twenty twenty-two Forest Area Community and Senior Center budget. And we'll have Barb Cooper and then at the end Abby wanted to say something. So Barb, thanks for your patience and waiting.
Thank you. I'm Barb Cooper. I'm the Executive Director of the DeForest Area Community and Senior Center. I'm here tonight to present the draft summary of the twenty twenty-two budget. The Community Center Commission did review and approve release of this budget to get feedback from the municipalities. I'm here tonight to present it to you, and I'll be presenting to the Windsor Board in August. I want to first say thank you to the village for its ongoing support of the center. And start just with a few highlights from twenty twenty of how the center fared the year with COVID, considering that we serve seniors who were, you know, acutely affected by the pandemic. Last year, we served twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty people. That's nine hundred and eight unduplicated. And that sounds like a really large number. However, in a normal year, we would have served forty-two thousand. But again, the building was closed for much of the year. In March of twenty twenty, we were designated by the county as essential services. And we were directed to continue our nutrition program, which provides lunches to area seniors. And, you know, we were left with, you know, how are we going to do this safely? Who who is going to be able to help us with that? We we rely on volunteers, many of whom are seniors. And we came through it with flying colors. We had delivered meals to and or curbside pickup. Meals were provided to three hundred and sixty individuals, and it represented ten thousand meals. We had a hundred and thirty-nine volunteers help us along the way with this. So that was volunteers who remained committed and really it was incredibly inspirational. You know, during the shelter in place time, when food pantries closed and people were struggling to, you know, get food. Even the grocery shelves were empty. We conducted a food drive and and sent out boxes to fifty-three people. Every other year, they received a twenty-four pound box of of food to help them meet their nutritional needs. In April of this year of twenty twenty-one, we partnered with Hometown Pharmacy and we administered COVID vaccines with the help of the pharmacist to three hundred and fifty people. And that was the two dose version, so that represented seven hundred appointments at the center. We we learned a lot. We learned about resilience and we learned some things that will continue that we realized that you can do services without walls. Drive-through became our motto. We we actually had a case manager do drive-up case management service. You know, she had her laptop plugged into an extension cord and had people drive up and give her documents. And so, you know, it we we came out of it whole. We are reopened and people are very happy to be back. And so I'll move on to the budget that was included in your packet. You know, it's a we're presenting a pretty flat budget. We have a a small increase of a thousand five hundred dollars over the previous budget. I guess, as you look at it, you can see that, you know, municipal municipal support represents eighty percent of our revenue. And the money that we get from Dane County for our case management and nutrition represents fifteen percent of the budget. And then looking at the expense portion of our annual budget, our wages and and keeping staff to do the work is seventy percent of the expenses. And combining some of the lines that I listed, just the facility-related expenses is eleven percent. And operating is about twelve point six percent. The lower part of this document, I thought if I was sitting in your shoes, that I'd be wondering what what is this going to cost me? And and how is how is it shared among the various municipalities? I've summarized the municipal contributions over a five-year period from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one. And and the population figures that were used for each of those years. The municipal requests that we're making for for next year is five hundred and eighty-two thousand. That would be shared among the three municipalities. At this time, we don't have the population figures that we'd be using to to calculate the contribution. But we should get the census figures in September. So I guess I'll take any questions and hopefully I can answer, or if Abby would like to speak.
Abby, do you want to add something?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, well, first I just want to second what Barb said about the amazing response that the center had around COVID. I was fortunate enough to be able to volunteer and help during that time, and I was amazed by how many people stepped forward and and how is smooth and efficient and safe that whole operation was with meal delivery. And I, so I'm fairly new to the, or I am new to the commission as of, I think, April. And it's a great group of people. I enjoy going to the meetings, lots of good questions, discussion and thoroughness around all the issues. Barb and the staff there are constantly working to improve operations and quality of services provided to our seniors in the community, which I really appreciate, and good communication so far with the two other municipal leaders. Bruce from Windsor and Steve from Vienna. And then just related to this budget, I think, from my memory of looking at previous center budgets as a trustee, I think it is pretty comparable, as Barb said, just a a small increase for our municipal contribution. And I think also, like, looking forward with with future budgets, this is just my opinion. You know, it might come up more, you know, as as the center might need to expand because we we are going to likely be serving more seniors. And, you know, would that involve an expansion or a second site? That's something to consider and would probably affect future budgets. And I just think this is an important population that's being served. And I know it's an important population to a lot of you, so I think continued to support for the center's work is really important.
Thank you, Abby. I think tonight we're simply receiving the budget. It's listed as for discussion only, so I'm assuming we're we're not going to to approve it. Or do we need to?
I don't think there's any need to, and if it's listed for discussion only, then you can't take action.
Okay, thank you. And and we do appreciate it and appreciate the service. And I would ask, is are there any questions for Jim?
So this is a question, I believe, for Barb. You were describing the different numbers that you helped. And I believe you said nine hundred and eight. I may get the number wrong, but you called it like unduplicated. I just wondered what that term meant.
Unduplicated means it's each person who would come would utilize the service. But we have people who utilize services on a weekly or nearly daily time. So with the duplicated number represents people who may become multiple times throughout the year. But so it's nine hundred and eight unduplicated. So that would be like a head count versus counting how many times a person utilizes services.
Okay, so then the number you said, I think, just prior to that was twenty thousand some, that's
Yes, twenty-eight thousand. Yeah.
Other questions?
I I wanted to add that we do plan to organize a stakeholders' meeting that we would invite representatives from DeForest, Windsor, Vienna or other interested, you know, people to to come to a meeting at the center and to discuss, you know, the future and and, you know, learn about what the center does and have, you know, a discussion time. We haven't finalized the date, but I wanted to share that as well.
Thank you. Other questions for Barb? If not, Barb, thank you, and we will take this under advisement.
All right, yeah, thanks.
All right, 8.2. You're up, Chief. This is a discussion and action regarding hiring a professional to design in addition to the public safety building for use by the fire district. Steve and I and Colleen have been involved in discussions with with the Fire Board and with Windsor to look at two things. One, a potential site for a second station in the future by five years kind of timeframe. And also to the need for remodeling the existing station. They have they have firefighters stacked like cordwood in offices and closets and other locations. So Chief, do you want to talk a little bit about your need and how it impacts the station?
Sure. I cleared out the room for you guys as normal. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right. Um, yeah, so the station was designed, I believe, in 98 was when it was actually constructed. And it was to serve a volunteer force. We have long outgrown that. I think our last remodel was somewhere around 2005, where we added some sleeping quarters out of our kitchen space. Again, most of our volunteers were coming from home. Again, we've outgrown that significantly. COVID was awful for us. We did convert a closet into a bedroom. We have people sleeping in working offices and the firefighters, EMTs, are sleeping three to a room in prison monk beds currently. We need to address it on multiple levels. It affects our recruiting. It affects security of the members that are staying there, our ability to keep everyone safe from COVID, which is by no means over in our world. So, yeah, we asked the board or I asked the board to look into it. And the board decided to come to the village because they currently own the station and put it before this group.
Steve, do you want to?
I guess, yeah, I can add a few things. So yes, we are the landlord. We have probably 17 years left on the lease, the second lease of that property. And talking with our neighbors, they had recognized the need to renegotiate or to come up with a lease for that new portion of the building. So they recognize that they are asking for us to fund that since it ours our building that we would have it designed. The fire district would approve of that design. Obviously, we're be heavily involved. Then we would, the village would incur the cost of that and then lease that back to the fire district with the villages paying their fair share. We would likely issue some debt. We have impact fees above $400,000 worth that we could apply toward that. And we've done some research and we believe that American Rescue Plan Act money could go toward that, which would be a very, I think, a very solid move to use some of that money for that, along with other priorities of the community.
We're talking remodel. It's just the living space. So adding sleeping quarters, adding bathrooms and adding a gathering space, a day room. Folks are spending 48 hours of time there and we just, we don't have the facilities for them to cook or eat or socialize or really shower. We have one shower per per bathroom and we have two bathrooms. So 10 people on call, the line in the morning is hectic.
And it's a maze. You can get lost. We did the tour. So the the Fire Board and I don't know, Lou, this was in your packets. I don't know if people saw it. It was if we can pull that up. But it's a letter with the motions that the Fire Board passed. Can we? Okay. So what the Fire Board was asking, it was a motion to recommend the village at DeForest consider the expansion at the current facility at 110 South Stephenston Street to accommodate the on-call staffing needs of sleeping quarters. There it is. Restrooms, day room, kitchen and dining to recommend consideration of a lease amendment with the DeForest Windsor Fire Protection Board for the funding with the obligation paid in installments. And the installment payments will be payable in the form of increased rent and existing terms. So I think tonight what we need to do is to prove getting someone, an architect, to to design what it might look like. We need to secure design services. So that's step one. And I think that's what we're looking for approval on this evening.
I'd like to keep it as general as professional services. We don't know if it's an engineer. Existing riff lines, which seem to be this biggest problem. We also have, I think, while there's vents or monitoring wells in that area too, that professionals need to make sure. I think they're not being used anymore. But they still, I think, building around those or on those will take some expertise.
Okay. Yeah.
Just just to add, as I've sat through the meeting tonight, there's a lot of discussion of the need for senior care facilities and housing and high density and affordable housing. And and these are all important to the community. But this is going to be the first step in us being, we need to be able to to secure and keep those people safe. And this is an absolute necessary first step to do that. We will, as we continue to grow, have to add full-time staff. And we're going to need somewhere to house them. You know, when you're putting in senior care facilities with 150 beds or or assisted livings, that's 150 patients. Potential patients added to our call load. So just for reference, when we added the sleeping quarters 10, 15 years back, we were doing 600 calls a year. And we're over 1,600 right now.
Thank you. Thank you. That is, it is dramatic. I know Colleen was and I were were listening to the presentation on recruitment issues and how many people we hire and other people steal from us because they have better facilities or they have better hours or better opportunities. Rebecca?
Yeah, just a clarification question. When you say keep it more general, is it fair to say that we might need more than one professional?
Possibly, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve securing professional services to design the addition. Colleen?
I would make a motion to secure professionals to design the addition to the public safety building for use by the fire district.
I'll second it. Does she draw seconded? Any further discussion? Jim?
As a second, I don't see like a resolution. This is just the motion that's put forward, right? So a little bit of a question. I've heard some discussion. The chief mentioned like that we might just be remodeling the inside. And then on this letter talks about expansion and then there's talking about additions. I'm just wondering where that goes or who determines what the needs are. And I guess I'll speak a little bit to rumors I've heard like many years ago. And I think this is maybe five or 10 years ago. I'm sure Chief, you would hopefully remember this or remember it clearer than myself. Remember, there's this time when we were looking for places for people to sleep and there is discussion of maybe even using, say, the old village hall parts basement was a discussion. And I've also heard of maybe like building loss in the in the, say, fire truck area. Sorry, I don't know. So I mean, we're trying to get very creative and I just wonder if we're at the point that we are talking expansion. And then I started questioning, where are we expanding to?
The, as a gentleman who slept in village halls basement, that was a bad idea. So but and we also looked in, there's too much mechanical out in the apparatus bay to use our lofts. So when I'm I'm speaking of living quarters, that is an expansion of the living quarters, which would be between the bay and the police department. So we're using the courtyard area. If everyone's familiar, if you're coming down Holom, it's that little cutout where the fence is. Adding bedrooms in that area and taking our existing space and turning it into a large living area, including a kitchen. Is is my theory.
Bill?
How much, how many beds do you need? Not today, but for 10 years from now.
Well, that's kind of a tricky question. Cause in 10 years, I'm hoping to not be operating out of a single station. Would be having the growth. 10 bedrooms gives me 20 beds comfortably. And ideally, I'm sleeping 10 per station. When we're running full speed, full time. That's going to be out of my length of service and probably this boards. By the time we get fully staffed, two stations.
This is right now until we get another station built.
This would definitely get us by.
10 beds?
10 beds, well, 10 rooms. It could be up to 20 beds. If I could get 20 people to be on call on a weekend, we have a good problem.
Other questions?
Oh, okay.
Oh, there it is.
So yep, Holom would be on the left, running north, south. So that's it. That's the addition there. Keeping the courtyard in place is that open space there. And then keep going to the right there. That's our existing space that has three bedrooms in it now. We would take that out and turn that into a large large day room and kitchen. And then that would give us back our office space as well.
This is a sleeping quarter room right here with no window or no windows. That's my favorite.
Yeah, that is a closet we did have to convert. The intention was to use it as an office. But then COVID hit and it turned into a bedroom. Honestly, it's quiet and white chilly. So it's good for me, but nobody else seems to like it. Yeah. I could sleep in a meat locker, but most people complain.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, same sign, motion carries. So we'll start the process. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. The the second motion that came from the Fire Board wasn't noticed on the agenda. But we can, we can, you know, I can tell you what it what it is because it's on your letter. There is a no, I can't.
I didn't have the letter till today, so.
Oh, okay. You'll notice the second motion is that the Fire Board has approved a a choice of land to look at for the for the second station in its in Windsor Crossing Village Center. So and North Town Road. So if you're, if you come about the roundabout by the new school in Windsor, the cemetery is on one side, the the triangular piece of land is across. I think there's a quick trip on the other side of the street. The 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 piece of land would in fact have some some need for for the right kind of design. And and we've expressed some concern about, you know, the the roundabout in the school and some of those those areas. But you know, the feeling is that once North Town goes through and it it and we considered its location and felt that it would give us shorter response times. Chief, do you want to talk about that more?
Sure. We did a little research. I was given about six or seven spots mostly in the Windsor area to look at second stations. What we've identified is a lot of our call volume, not only for Windsor, but DeForest is heading to the southern versus northern end of the district. We're picking up parts of Burke in the future. So we started just kind of tracking. We put our heat map up, call volume versus location, response times. And that site seemed to make the most sense. The deciding factor for me was the neighborhood's going to be a healthy neighborhood, do have the department in. Some of the other locations were what I could consider less optimal, maybe for us. But I think what the board is looking for is just the understanding or an agreement that is they progress forward as a board. One or both villages doesn't change their mind in the future. And then the other ones kind of stuck. So I guess that'll have to be maybe discussed further in the next meeting. Since we weren't on the agenda.
Yep. And, you know, I think the board will want more information about what does that mean in terms of agreements and and how we're how we're looking at it. But in general, the Fire Board agreed that it was the most logical choice at this point.
Yeah, and I can I can gladly bring in more information for people to look at how we got to our conclusion.
That would be great.
So let me know when I'm supposed to be here again.
We will. Thank you. All right. A break, is that what you said? We can take a break. And take, take five, as they say. All right, we're going to get started with 8.3. Well, this is a discussion regarding action at joint review board meetings related to creation of amendment of TID districts. Steve?
Yeah, thank you. So at the, I think it was the last village board meeting, there was a comment made that the school district always votes no against TID plans and TID amendments. So Luann helped helped me out in looking into that information. And from the information she shared and what she was able to obtain, only once did the school district vote no. I do recall that joint review board meeting. And followed up with, that was actually the business manager. I followed up with the superintendent. The superintendent did not know why that no vote was cast. So just to clarify what has actually happened. That's in that table. So any questions people might have?
Thank you. We had to keep the record clear. Bill?
Yeah, thanks for doing that. 25 times they met. 10 times school district was absent. It's like a 60% attendance rate. I wish Ruin Azos was here. Well, he can explain what happened years ago, but why don't they show up?
My feeling is that they're not in opposition and they're busy with other men.
Well, I think everybody should show up. It's a big responsibility. I'll talk to Eric next library board meeting. Thanks. Thanks for bringing it.
All right. Item 9.1, ordinance 2021 dash 014 ordinance creating section 3.06. I'm sorry, Abby, I promised you I'd try to pay attention.
Sorry. Yeah, that's okay. I just yeah, I just, just a quick, like, I I wanted to thank Steve and Luann for bringing that information because I I probably had a confused look on my face at the last meeting too, because I've I've looked at past meeting minutes of the joint review board and I didn't remember there being, well, any nay votes, but I guess there was one way back when. And I I I think that's important to clarify. And also I think we also have to be careful as elected officials. You know, when we share information with the community that, I mean, obviously mistakes are made and and it's good to recognize that and apologize. But sometimes that misinformation can really lead to distrust or concern when maybe there doesn't need to be. So I just, I just wanted to point that out. So I just, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Abby. Any other comments? If not, we'll move to 9.1, ordinance 2021-014. In ordinance creating section 3.061P of the DeForest Municipal Code prohibiting parking on Jefferson Street between North Town Road and Brunner Street. Chris?
I coming through now, okay. So with the recent construction beginning on the new section of Jefferson Street between Brunner Street and North Town Road. We're looking to have this ordinance pass which prohibits parking on that section of the street. The current design with the with just doesn't really support parking there. And for public safety reasons, it's going to be a pretty, I suspect, pretty decently traveled section of road, especially before and after school, so the benefit of just having no parking on both sides of the street seems to be good from a public safety perspective, to allow the safe flow of traffic directions.
I thank you for bringing this to our attention and I do remember talking about this during the planning and zoning review of the site plan and concern about the with. And we were also hoping, I don't know if it was included, but we were hoping to have like a left turn and a right turn as we exited. But I guess I am definitely in support of the ordinance and I guess I would like to make the motion to approve the ordinance as written, ordinance 2021-014.
I second it. We have a motion by Jim and a second by Rebecca, yes, Bill?
The only question I have is, is Jefferson Street will be a public street? Will you be able to traverse the whole length of Jefferson Street and be on public property and school property?
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that Jefferson Street all the way to North Town Road will be a public street.
Okay, just in case somebody has a firearm in their car and they're not on school property, if they come from North Town to get to, say, the Catholic church.
Yep, as long as they're driving on Jefferson Street, it's a public street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor of approving 2021-014, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. 9.2. Ordinance 2021-017, an ordinance approving a certified survey map dividing a 1.57 acre outlaw from current parcel specified here, located within the Conservancy Place Development for purposes of stormwater management serving the realigned River Road. You don't.
I don't have anything to add to that other than it is for outlaw purposes. You have anything, no?
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, is there any discussion? Jim?
I guess I have a little bit of reservations because it talked about how we need to actually redo the CSM to have, to show the entire parcel that we're dividing off of. And another reservation I have is it talked about how we're drainage proper, we're draining property to this stormwater basin. And I know, I'll say, it's not on the seniors property, the senior centers or memory care facilities property, but we have that easement just south of it that has the potential to be a trail and I'm curious where the drainage ditch is, if it's interfering with that potential trail or if the trail will be graded when the ditch is graded. So I don't think I've seen that plan.
I don't, I'm not aware of any plans for any, any of that.
I'm not either, I don't, I can't recall any.
Right, yeah.
I'd have to.
So there's not ditches going to it, it's this general surface water going to it?
I'd have to look at the plans again and confirm that.
Other questions? What is the timeline on this? We're, we're in the process now already of.
Yeah, realigning River Road and this was just a piece that kind of fell off the map when that realignment happened. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have more information, I'm just kind of pitch hitting at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, if we we move forward on it, I'd look for a motion to approve or a motion to.
I think the motion to approve was already.
Already made, so we had a couple of questions, any other questions, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I guess I'm going to abstain, I do want to bring another question as far as when the CSM does get redone, if it could maybe be submitted. I don't know if the board wants it or at least to the planning and zoning.
When the CSM gets redone, you want to brought before P and Z?
Well, in the, in the discussion, it talked about how because the land, the outlaw being taken off of a property, the property that is taken off of is too small to not be a lot. Does that make sense? I think it needs to be redone as a two lot CSM rather than a single lot. I'm guessing that means that it'll go back to you, Brandy, for review.
Yeah, if there's public land dedication, then it would come to P and Z and then village board.
Okay.
I can cer, I can certainly follow up and make sure that the proper steps are taken for that.
Thank you, and I guess and I'll see you.
I'll let you know, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. 9.3. Ordinance 2021-018, an ordinance amending section 1.07 2MA of the DeForest Municipal Code, we code regarding, relating to agenda preparation. We had a, an ordinance change to set up a process for getting items on the agenda. We had a recommendation last, during that process that we have three trustees to sponsor a, an item for the agenda. And that's been brought back before the board for reconsideration tonight. You'll find, you'll find the language change in, in your packets. Rebecca?
Yeah, I have a real problem with this one, I asked you about this, why it was brought forward and that you had brought it forward. And this feels, to me, it feels like, well, you didn't get the answer you wanted last time, so let's try it again. And did I or did I not have to involve the chief of police to get you to get those things on the agenda?
Actually, you did not have to do it.
Actually, I did because you refused to get them on the agenda. You broke a village ordinance. You can laugh all you want, but that's what happened. And that was with two trustees.
That isn't actually what happened, Rebecca, you did go to the chief of police.
I did, after I repeatedly.
To have any basis, so we put the item on the agenda and it was intended to be on the agenda.
I love how you're rewriting history. I thoroughly object to this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Abby?
Yeah, so I, I thought a bit about this. Because I, I'm someone in the past that has definitely exercised that two trustee co-sponsorship option. And I, I did so as, as a new trustee as well. I've been on the board four years now. And I've also gotten agenda items on, or gotten items on the agenda, just going directly to the village president as well. And what I've found over the last few years of the two different options of getting things on the agenda. Whenever I approached the village president and got them on board with it for sponsoring that agenda item, it was more likely to be successful in the outcome, you know, the vote or, or the positive discussion that involved, took place. Basically, I interpret that to me, mean, for whatever reason, if the village president agrees with what you're trying to do as a trustee, more than likely the board will as well. I'm not sure if that's because, you know, the, the respect or leadership in that village president position or, or something else. So that's one reason that I'm in favor of this because I think, and also if there's three trustees that are needed, that's still very much possible, you just have an additional trustee to reach out to and that's further vetting to make sure that that issue is something that the board would be interested in. And then also there is the issue of that there can be at times that the two trustees are inserting agenda items that aren't necessarily directly related to village business and might either intentionally or unintentionally be meant to stir up controversy. And that's a real issue for me because I can only speak for myself as a trustee, it's very distracting to the time, energy and thoughts that I need to focus on, you know, what really is directly village business. Like, for example, I, I would much rather focus on, you know, the, the vote that we would be taking on, for example, of amendment to a TID. Instead of having to worry about, you know, some agenda item that was thrown on, I don't know why it was thrown on. It's confusing and so then I have to spend time and energy to figure out how I'm going to vote on that agenda item and what I will say, because it's likely a controversial topic. And I know I personally would just, I need that time and energy to focus on the really essential core functions of being on the village boards. That's why I think that we should move towards three trustees co-sponsoring an agenda item and I will say if there's two trustees out there that have an agenda item that they're interested, they can reach out to me and if I think it's reasonable, that's something that, you know, we should at least discuss, you know, I'll be willing to be that third co-sponsorship. So just want to share that.
Thank you, Abby. Other comments? Jim?
I guess I want to ask the question in, at first, ignore the, the comment about the change as far as two and three, but I see there's other red lines on it. And I don't quite understand the one sentence, why it's crossed off, I think I agree with it being crossed off, but I don't. I guess I don't understand why it was there in the first place.
The, the one that says shall include on the agenda, any, for any special meeting, that one?
Yeah. And then, I guess the continue like discussion. I am personally for keeping it two trustees, I am amenable to that we do have village business to attend to. And many times, as we've had in the last few meetings, it's been an action packed meeting and adding items that maybe aren't directly associated with current business happening. I'd be open to where I see the village president, I'm reading from the ordinance, the village president shall include any such item on the agenda for the next regular meeting. And then we have an red or a special meeting if so requested. But I would be open to the next regular meeting or maybe the next following or even two following, just to give the time needed to have enough time at a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Clean, was that your hand? Oh, okay, Bill?
The history of this, staff has directed, developed a policy, came back the form, which is fine, it makes, it makes it easier on Luann or whoever is going to be the clerk. And he evolved into three trustees. He was defeated last week or was, you know, high vote. Now it's up again. It's kind of upsetting to see it come back, but I want to re-vote on the same thing, let's do it.
Okay. Clean?
I was just going to second what Abby said, she pretty well covered it as far as being distracted from true village board business.
Okay, thank you. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Abby, a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Roll call.
Yep, any further discussion?
I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment to add in the next regular meeting or the subsequent following meeting.
Are you okay with that? Abby, are you okay with that? Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's the only change she's suggesting, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Clean is too, okay. So did you get that, Lou?
I'm almost. To add to the next meeting or the next subsequent meeting?
And then, or the special meeting if so requested.
Got it. You wanted a roll call vote?
Yep.
Still a discussion.
Just to want to.
Still a discussion, excuse me.
So I'd like to ask for an amendment to change it from three to two trustees.
I would second that if you need one.
All right. We've, we've got an amendment to change it from three to two, so I think we have to vote on that before we vote on the original motion. So we'll vote on Jim's request to change it from back to two from three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, so we have four, three. Were you?
Four.
Nay?
Three, four.
Three, four, yeah, okay. It failed, yeah. So now we have on the floor the motion that would change it to three to sponsor and added the language regarding the next regular or subsequent meeting or a special meeting. So all those in favor, roll call, all right.
Trustee Allen?
Yes.
Trustee Langraff?
Trustee Lowery.
Aye.
Trustee Little? Trustee Simpson? Trustee Whiterspoon?
No.
President Cahill Wolfgram?
Yes.
Motion carries four, three.
Thank you. All right. Item 10, presentation of resolutions. A resolution authorizing the village president and clerk to execute a development agreement for Savannah Brooks Phase Two. So. So. Steve?
There's a development in, agreement in the packet. This is for. Just an additional phase in Savannah Brooks. This has nothing to do with the public hearing or discussion of the amendment to the PU, PDP. I believe Brandy's getting it up here. There's some language changes that came through toward the end of the date that Al will address. So. You want to share those, Al, and then I can get into questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where they are, but there were some language left over from a previous agreement that came through with Mr. Lawton's draft. I didn't catch it. He didn't catch it. It's, it's minor language dealing with a TIF bond that doesn't apply to this agreement. So we would just be removing that language.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side? Motion carries. All right. Check registered, nothing. Commission reports were in your packet. Steve, do you want to do the public affairs report? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything specific, I guess.
I don't either. Okay, moving on. Public service update, Chad?
Yep, I have a, three things just to kind of give an update on. Let's start with some good news. Doesn't mean there's bad news to follow, just good news. The census to fix that, it was struck by lightning. We were concerned it might be a hefty price tag. It's only gonna be fourteen hundred dollars. So we're getting that repaired. Our guys are gonna be out again tomorrow, though, reading meters the old fashioned way by driving the route. So they'll be taking care of that. Waste management, I've invited representatives to come and address the village board next meeting, August third. They are a number of items that we met with them on back in. April or May timeframe. And they've got better for a little bit, but it's slipped back. So some of the items that we had addressed with them, that there, he should be prepared to talk about is residential recycling route issues and the finishing of those. Debris left behind in the roadways. And also coming out of the trucks, it's not, they're not securing their loads. They left a nice hydraulic spill a couple of different times through the village. They missed dumpster pickups on a regular basis. Residents being told waste management doesn't serve the forest when they call waste management. There've been delays on reporting on tonnages and also reporting on complaints, I think doesn't quite jive with the numbers we have. And then that meeting we had back in the spring, they told us you're adding additional trucks and routes and hopefully they can address if that's been working for them. And what they may be doing to try to fix the issues that they are having here in the village. So. To staff and not meeting the needs that were expected of them. And so your opportunity to ask their questions and address them will come August third.
Bill?
We have insurance on lightning because we sure seem to be struck a lot.
I'll back on the census thing. Sure, we, it's, we do have insurance that we, we can file a. What do you call it? Claim.
File a claim.
Simple word. Nay, I can't, but I can't do claim.
Lou?
We do have insurance for that. We did file a claim.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I'm at a loss. I, waste management comes at noon every Wednesday and picks up the stuff. And. So I'm not aware of anything. I've, nobody's contacted me, but. Obviously, there are problems. Hopefully, we can.
If you walk down Meadow Lane and look at all the stains on the road from their hydraulic spills, where they, they not only left squares, but trails going out. And there are other streets like that.
Over in Windsor?
No. No, Meadow Lane, it goes across from like where Old Nashville Bank is.
I was looking over on the other side of. You know, in Windsor. Okay. About that. All right, thanks.
Anything else, Chad?
And then the third item, just to kind of clarify for. The board, there was discussion about River Road and being four lanes. I just wanted to clarify the. Back in two thousand, we had. When that development occurred, there's a section conservancy way now that will soon become the new River Road. That is four lanes there and innovation certainly is four lanes. And that will be a metered, a four way stop sign there. And that is about the only part that will be four lanes. The remainder of River Road, we're projecting it to probably be. Two and a half wide at this point. Studies have shown from scale engineering that. It may warrant further exploration of three lane, making it a four lane road, but at this time it won't be. We're, we're, we're planning to redo River Road in the near future. And with that corridor, we plan to leave it more rural and not put in curb and gutter. So if it needs and warrants getting to four lanes, we certainly can do that, but there's also a proposed frontage road that would go along the interstate, which may alleviate a lot of traffic off of River Road as well. So to, to do a four lane road on River Road, that's. At this point, it doesn't meet warrants. It may need further investigation, but in the short term, in the next ten to fifteen years, they don't think it's gonna be needed at this point. So we will do improvements to River Road as it comes along, but that's where we're at.
Questions, Jim?
I was gonna just clarify and agree with you that I worked on the highway V interchange. And at that point, it was a conceptual thing. So like the. Up on highway V, the connection to River Road.
Yep.
When we designed that, we designed the throat to be four lanes because it was conceptualized as going four lanes quite a ways south. But I agree with you. I don't, I don't think it's really needed to be four lanes. I mean, the KL and other experts can tell us that, but I think it's probably better as a two lane when maybe widen out at certain intersections, provide left turn lanes. But.
Yeah, we certainly have plans. They have right turn and left turn passages there. And maybe if it's two and a half wide, there could be a. divider left turn. Opportunity for that, but we're not planning to make it four lanes at this point. And I just want to clarify that. And I know there's been a lot of talk through all that's happening out in conservancy and a lot of the residents were concerned that making it four lanes, it only increased the amount of traffic and viability for. So there'll be trails and there'll be other things that are coming that will help alleviate that pedestrian and bicycle traffic. But for motorized traffic, it'll just be on a ruralish to, to an athlete road.
The other ques- questions for Chad? All right. Then thirteen point three, update regarding Forest Library. Bill, do you have anything?
They're working on a survey. I suggested like three questions and it evolved into five pages. Jan is, wants to be very inclusive and it's a great idea. And hopefully everybody's. Fill out a survey. They're giving out prizes, so maybe a conflict interest. I, I didn't fill one out. My wife did. We were in the. Fourth of July parade. They had like a hundred and fifty pounds of candy. And they only got rid of about seventy. And if you were on my side of the wagon, kids were happy. But the, the survey will be completed sometime towards the end of August. And probably in September, we'll be able to bring you some results.
Thank you. Public safety, Tashitra? Nothing to report. Thank you. Community and senior center, Abby, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, just real quick. I'm sharing it just so, well, because it, we agreed that it would be public. But Barb is planning on retiring next spring, unfortunately. She's a great, great executive director. So likely on our next commission meeting, we will discuss. We plan to have an agenda item to discuss ad hoc search committee. To try and give us adequate time to, you know, find a good person to take over. And then ideally having some time that they can overlap with Barb and have a smooth transition as possible.
Thank you. Anything else? CDA hasn't met yet. They were gonna meet and we didn't have a quorum, so we'll meet next week. DeForest Windsor Fire and EMS, Colleen?
I think we pretty well covered it tonight. Discussion about the second station and the land and the redo of the air station.
Thank you. All right. Nothing for president's report, so I guess we'll convene into closed session. Entertain motion to go into close.
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session.
Sir, a second? We have a second? All those, all we need, roll call.
The second I didn't hear.
Oh, Colleen?
Trustee Langrave?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Little? Trustee Simpson?
Yes.
Trustee Witherspoon?
Yes.
Trustee Allen?
Yes.
President Cahill Wolfgram?
Yes.
All right.
Question for Luanne. Would you prefer, are you doing a breakout room or would you prefer me to come to village hall right now?
I'll do a breakout room for you, Abby.
Now we're good.
Okay, all right. Action resulting from closed session seventeen point one, resolution twenty twenty one dash zero six six, author, a resolution authorizing the president and clerk to execute a development agreement with Regal Development LLC. I'd entertain a motion.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve? Any further discussion? Guess not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item seventeen point two. Motion carried. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Almost ready for nap time. Seventeen point two and.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We don't have to deal with the item. All right. All right, we have a motion to.
Second.
Adjourn in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? It's all good. We have a, one nay. Did you catch that, Lou?
No, I'm sorry. Who voted no, please?
Jim.
Okay, thank you. And Abby. Abby, did you vote no?
Yeah.
Sorry, Abby.